I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is recognitions, and we have the introduction of newly appointed, promoted, and transferred administrators. Dr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. LaFever. Tonight it is my pleasure to introduce you to our 20 new administrators and deans for this school year. These leaders have been propelled into their new positions, riding a wave of change during this unique and thought-provoking environment that we're calling the 2020-2021 school year. Leaders, when I call your name, please stand. From Palatine High School, Brittany Burrellman, dean. Mrs. Brittany Burrellman will serve as the dean at Palatine High School. She has been a social studies teacher at Palatine since 2006. During that time, she's been the swimming and diving head coach, water polo coach, speech team assistant coach, service club sponsor, and social studies literacy coach. Mrs. Burrellman received a bachelor's degree in history and secondary education from Lewis University in 2006, a master's in reading from St. Xavier University in 2010. She's currently working on her principal leadership degree at Roosevelt University. Brittany Burrellman, welcome. Kim Glazer, 12-month assistant principal, buildings and grounds. Mrs. Kimberly Glazer was appointed as the 12-month assistant principal for buildings and grounds at Palatine High School. She most recently served as a 12-month assistant principal as lead disciplinarian at William Front High School, a position she held since 2017. Previously, she was a 10-month assistant principal at William Front High School from 2014 to 17. She joined District 211 as an English teacher at Front High School in 2012, when Principal Small hired her, and served as the school's dean of students during the 2013-2014 school year. Prior to her positions in District 211, Mrs. Glazer taught English for six years at Niqua Valley High School. Mrs. Glazer earned her bachelor's degree in English from the University of Iowa, and she received her master's degree in school improvement leadership from Olivet Nazarene University. Welcome, Kim. Mark Johnson, dean. Mr. Mark Johnson will be taking on the role as dean of Palatine High School, where he has been a social studies teacher for the past 19 years. Mr. Johnson has been the head boys' golf coach for the past 12, and the head girls' basketball coach for the past nine. Mr. Johnson earned his bachelor's degree in psychology from Bradley University in 1995, his master's degree from Roosevelt University in U.S. history in 2006, and is currently working on a master's degree in instructional leadership and principal preparation from Roosevelt University. Welcome, Mark. Michael Smith, 10-month assistant principal. Mr. Michael Smith will serve as the 10-month assistant principal at Palatine High School. Before coming to District 211, Mr. Smith had an administrative position as dean of students at Hinsdale South High School, a position he held since 2017. Prior to this position, he was an English teacher and assistant department chair for English at Hinsdale South High School for the 2016-2017 school year. Previously, he was an English teacher from 2006 to 17, and had girl soccer coach from 2011 to 2017 at Hinsdale Central High School. He began his career as an English teacher at East Peoria Community High School in 2005. Mr. Smith earned his bachelor's degree in English secondary education from Bradley University in 2004, and received his master's degree in educational leadership from Concordia University in 2011. Welcome to District 211. William Front High School, Amanda Hughes, 12-month assistant principal, lead disciplinarian. Mrs. Amanda Hughes was appointed as a 12-month assistant principal at Front High School. Mrs. Hughes comes to District 211 with experience as a principal from Berlin Area School District in Berlin, Wisconsin. From 2014 to 2018, she held the position as grant project director, in which she oversaw professional development, school climate, and the system of academic and behavior supports throughout the Berlin Area School District. Before this role, Mrs. Hughes was a school counselor from 2009 to 2014, first at Hinckley Big Rock in Hinckley, Illinois, and then West Branch Community District in West Branch, Iowa. Prior to becoming a high school counselor, Mrs. Hughes was an English teacher from 2007 to 2009 at Hinckley Big Rock Community School District, and in 2006 at Betterdorf High School in Bettendorf, Iowa. Mrs. Hughes received a Bachelor of Arts degree in teaching language arts from Augustana College in 2006. She went on to earn her first master's degree in school counseling from Northern Illinois University, and completed the coursework for her second master's in educational administration from Concordia University. Welcome to District 211. Scott Newmark, dean. Mr. Scott Newmark will assume the role of dean at William Front High School, where he has been a world language teacher since 2013. During that time, he had been the girls', head girls' varsity tennis coach. Mr. Newmark earned his bachelor's degree in international relations and sociology at Butler University in 2007, a master's degree in secondary education from National Lewis University in 2011, and is working on a master's degree in instructional leadership, principal leadership, at Roosevelt University. Scott Newmark. Linda Sarafini, 10-month assistant principal. Ms. Sarafini assumes the role of 10-month assistant principal at Front High School this school year. She began her career as a family consumer sciences teacher in 2000 at Schaumburg High School. In 2015, Ms. Sarafini transferred to Hoffman Estates High School, where she coordinated the preschool and early education teacher program. In addition, she served as a sponsor and coach throughout her career, and has participated on many school committees. During the last school year, Ms. Sarafini served as the dean of students at Hoffman Estates High School. Ms. Linda Sarafini graduated from Western Illinois University with a bachelor's degree in family consumer sciences. She received a master's degree in educational leadership from Roosevelt University in 2005, and will complete a second master's degree in principal leadership from Aurora University later this year. Welcome, Linda. Conant High School, Dane Henning, 10-month assistant principal. This year, Mr. Dane Henning will transition to Conant High School as a 10-month assistant principal. He previously was appointed in 2016 as the administrator for the District 211 Alternative Learning Academy, where he established and led the new alternative program. During the 2015-2016 school year, Mr. Henning served as the department chair for the District 211 Academy North, and he has been a special ed teacher since 2011. Mr. Henning is currently pursuing a master's in educational leadership at Roosevelt University. He earned a Bachelor of Science in recreation, sport, and tourism from the University of Illinois in 2009, and a master's degree in teaching and special education in 2011 through the National Lewis University. Welcome, Dane. Janu Joseph, 10-month assistant principal. Mr. Janu Joseph will serve as the 10-month assistant principal at Conant High School. Last school year, Mr. Joseph was an assistant principal at Trober Junior High in Oswego, Illinois. Prior to that position, he was the assistant principal at Westmont High School in Community School District 201. Before entering administration, Mr. Joseph was a math teacher, first at Richard's Career Academy, and then at the Marine Leadership Academy from 2012 to 2017. Janu Joseph earned his bachelor's degree in mathematics from Purdue University in 2006. In 2009, he received a master's degree in teaching and learning from DePaul University. He then went on to earn an additional master's degree in educational leadership from National Lewis University. Welcome to District 211. David Thorpe, dean. Mr. David Thorpe has been appointed as the dean at Conant High School, where he served as a science teacher since 2007. During this time, he's been an active teacher leader, as a frequent provider of staff development, a member of the new teacher program, while also serving as the district PLC leader for physical science. He's the musical technical director, gaming club sponsor, and ultimate frisbee club coach. Mr. Thorpe earned his bachelor's degree in physics from Northern Illinois University in 2007, his master's degree in reading from St. Xavier University in 2011, and is currently working on an endorsement in instructional leadership from National Lewis University. Welcome, David. Schaumburg High School, Brian Harland, principal. Mr. Brian Harland begins this year as the principal of Schaumburg High School. He began his career in education as a science teacher at Hoffman Estates High School in 2007. After serving as a teacher and dean of students at Hoffman Estates High School in 2012, Mr. Harland transitioned to the 12-month assistant principal at Front High School. In 2015, Mr. Harland accepted a 12-month assistant principal position, responsible for student intervention and discipline at Hoffman Estates. The following year, he was appointed to the position at Hoffman Estates as 12-month assistant principal, overseeing activities, buildings, ground, and staff development. Mr. Harland received his undergraduate degree in geology from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in 2004, a master's degree in geology from Northern Illinois in 2007. He earned another master's degree in school leadership from Concordia University in Chicago, and in 2015 achieved both his master's degree in school business from Northern Illinois University and a chief business officer endorsement. Congratulations, Brian. Andrew Lozara, dean. Mr. Andrew Lozara will move into the position of dean at Schaumburg High School, where he has been a social studies teacher for the last 15 years. During this time, he's been the head girls' lacrosse coach, assistant girls' golf coach, and Saxon Solutions co-chair. Mr. Lozara earned a bachelor's degree in history from the University of Illinois in 2006, a master's degree in American history from the University of Illinois Chicago in 2011, and is pursuing a master's degree in instructional leadership from Roosevelt University. Congratulations, Andrew. Mary Kate Smith, 12-month assistant principal, lead disciplinarian. Mrs. Mary Kate Smith has been appointed as the 12-month principal at Schaumburg High School. Prior to this role, she was a 10-month assistant principal at Palatine High School since 2018. Mrs. Smith was a dean at Hoffman Estates High School for the 2017-2018 school year, where she coordinated the school's academic intervention program and provided support in addressing student attendance and behavioral concerns. Prior to this role, she served as a special education teacher at Hoffman Estates High School, a position she held since 2009. Mrs. Smith earned her undergraduate degree in special education from Illinois State University. She went on to earn a first master's degree in reading from St. Xavier University in 2011, and completed her coursework for her second master's degree in educational leadership from Concordia University in May 2018. Congratulations, Mary Kate. Hoffman Estates High School, Mike Arthur, principal. Mr. Michael Arthur begins his tenure year as principal of Hoffman Estates High School. Prior to this position, Mr. Arthur served as Palatine High School's 12-month assistant principal for staff development, buildings, and grounds, and activities, a position he held since 2008. Between 2006 and 2008, Mr. Arthur was a 10-month assistant principal as lead disciplinarian at Palatine High School. Also at Palatine High School, he began his role as administrator in District 211 in 2004 as a 10-month assistant principal. Prior to entering administration, Mr. Arthur was a business education teacher at Palatine from 2002 to 2004, and within Community School District 303 from 1995 to 2002. Mr. Arthur received his undergraduate degree in business education in 1995 from Illinois State University. He added a cooperative education certificate from Southern Illinois University, earned an additional, excuse me, earned a master's in educational leadership from Aurora University in 2002. Since 2017, Mr. Arthur is taking coursework towards a doctorate in curriculum and instruction through Aurora University. Congratulations, Mike. Anthony Gannus, 10-month assistant principal. This year, Mr. Anthony Gannus will serve as a 10-month assistant principal at Hoffman Estates High School, where he began his career as both a special education teacher and head wrestling coach in 2009. Mr. Gannus was appointed to the role of assistant department chair for special ed at Hoffman Estates in 2017. For the 2013-2014, Mr. Gannus served as the dean of students at Hoffman Estates. He received a bachelor's degree in public relations from Workburg College in 2003. In 2008, he earned a master's degree in special education teaching credentials from the University of Wisconsin at Lacrosse. He went on to earn his master's in educational leadership from Northeastern Illinois University in 2013. Congratulations, Tony. Eric Godowski, dean. Mr. Eric Godowski was appointed to the role of dean at Hoffman Estates High School for this school year. Previously, he's been a special education teacher in District 211 at Hoffman Estates and District 211 Academy North since 2014. During this time, he's been a varsity assistant football coach, head girls' lacrosse coach, and head Special Olympics coach at Hoffman Estates High School. Mr. Godowski earned his bachelor's degree in special education from Illinois State University in 2013, and recently completed a master's degree in educational leadership from Concordia University of Chicago. Welcome, Eric. Thomas Mokon, 12-month assistant principal, buildings and grounds. Mr. Thomas Mokon transitions this school year to Hoffman Estates High School, where he will serve as a 12-month assistant principal for buildings and grounds. Prior to this position, he was a 12-month principal as lead disciplinarian at Conant High School since 2017. From 2015 to 2017, he served as a 10-month assistant principal at Palatine High School. Tom Gannus teaching career in District 211 in 2007 as an English as a second language teacher at Palatine High School, where he also served as the dean of students from 2013 to 2015. Tom received his bachelor's degree in political science and history education from Michigan State University in 2004, an endorsement in ESL from Oakland University in 2006, a master's degree in linguistics from Northeastern Illinois in 2011. Additionally, he received a master's degree in educational leadership from Northeastern Illinois University in 2013. Welcome, Tom. Kimberly Ryan, dean. Ms. Kimberly Ryan will begin this school year as the dean at Hoffman Estates High School, where she has been a social studies teacher since 2003. During this time, she's been the head palms coach, musical producer, and junior class sponsor. Kimberly earned two bachelor's degrees from the University of Iowa in both education and history in 2002. She earned a master's degree in curriculum instruction from Olivet Nazarene University in 2005, and another master's degree in educational leadership from Concordia University of Chicago in 2011. Welcome, Kimberly. District 211 North Campus, Jacob Hughes. District 211 Alternative Learning Academy, 10-month assistant principal. Mr. Jacob Hughes will assume the position of the 10-month administrator at the District 211 ALA. Last year, Mr. Hughes served as the dean at Schaumburg High School. Since 2014, he served as a teacher in Schaumburg High School's special education department. Prior to this position, he was a part-time special education teacher at Hoffman Estates. Mr. Hughes began his career in District 211 as a coach and then a teacher assistant in 2008. In his career in District 211, he's also been the assistant coach in wrestling and the head coach for girls' lacrosse. Mr. Hughes received his bachelor's degree in physical education from Illinois State University in 2008, his learning behavior specialist endorsement from Roosevelt University in 2013, and his master's in instructional leadership from Roosevelt University in 2017. Congratulations, Jacob. Administration Center, Joshua Schumacher, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. Mr. Joshua Schumacher was appointed to the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction this year. Prior to this appointment, he served as the principal of Hoffman Estates High School from 2016 to 2020. Mr. Schumacher was the 12-month assistant principal for buildings and grounds at Hoffman Estates High School for two years, and from 2011 to 2014, he was an assistant principal at Hoffman Estates, responsible for the discipline office. He served as the dean of students during the 2009-2010 school year. Mr. Schumacher began his teaching career as a biology and physical science teacher at Hoffman Estates High School. Mr. Schumacher is nationally board-certified teacher through the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Mr. Schumacher earned his bachelor's degree in biological science from Illinois State University in 2002, and his master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Olivet Nazarene University in 2006. He earned a second master's degree in educational administration from Northern Illinois University in 2011, and has taken coursework towards a doctorate in teaching and learning from Illinois State University. Congratulations, Josh. My sincere thank you to each and every one of you. Here's to a great year of engagement, change, and adventure. I know you have additional items to prepare for tomorrow, as well as a potential family waiting to say goodnight to you if it's not too late. So thank you for being here, and we will see you tomorrow at school.
First will be public comments. According to Phase 4 guidelines issued by the state of Illinois, no more than 50 individuals may be gathered together in a specific location at one time. The Board of Education meeting is being held this evening in the auditorium at Hoffman Estates High School with a maximum of 50 individuals. The board meeting also will be simulcast in classrooms near the auditorium to accommodate any additional guests beyond the auditorium capacity. The Board of Education meeting is also being conducted via an electronic video conferencing application known as Zoom. Tonight, public comments will be in person. We anticipated a large number of individuals requesting to address the board this evening. The first 30 individuals in the random draw may have an opportunity to address the board and are seated in the auditorium. The Board of Education will hear public comment for a maximum of one hour in the order of the random draw. I will call individuals to the podium in the order they appear on the sign-in sheet, as well as the next individual to speak, and the sequence will follow that format for the duration of public comment. When you are called to speak, individuals should state their name for the record, though not required when individuals state if they, individuals may state if they are a resident of the district. Each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes to address the Board of Education. Speakers should keep their masks on when addressing the board. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. All right, the first person up tonight is Greg Kastuzicki. And if we could have the next person, Anusha Totakura. Be ready because you're on deck. Please.
Hi, good evening. Greg Kastuzicki, a concerned friend of plenty of boys in Conant High School. Again, just like last week, I'm asking the board to reconsider and open the school so the children can have regular education, because the students belong in the building, not at home through e-learning. Dr. Small, I looked at the DPH website, and I'm looking at the seven categories. Out of seven categories, the state of, I'm sorry, the Cook County is on target with seven, with six. New cases, we have 67 out of 100,000. That's a level warning. Target is 50 out of 100. Number of deaths, 24 on target. Tested positively, 5.8% on target under eight. Test performed, 100, I'm sorry, 43,000 on target. Emergency department visits for COVID-19-like illnesses is on target, 2.8. Hospital admissions for COVID-like, COVID-19-like illnesses, 134 on target. The Board of Education, Illinois State Board of Education yesterday released the guideline of what to do with the staff and students in school, in high schools. They're talking about the program, how to prevent spread of COVID, but they basically, the way I was reading it, they want the students to be in schools. That's why they wrote the document, what to do if any of the students get sick. I would like to know what is the plan for next week? I know you're not going to be answering the questions, but Mrs. Novak, from the principal of Conant High School, Dr. Small, you talked to me about bringing small groups of children as soon as next week. Is this still a plan? I have some questions regarding, do we really think we're going to completely eliminate the virus? What's going to happen if we don't have vaccination for the next 12 months? Are we going to keep children in school, I'm sorry, at home for the e-learnings? And what do we think about other illnesses? I mean, do we think about children's immune system? Also, I'd like to mention that other groups of people with the, around us are working, the nurses are working, the doctors are working, the firefighters are working, and I think we need to make this year normal for our children, and e-learning is not for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anusha, you're next, and Ali Kaya Totakura, you're on deck, please.
Good evening. My name is Anusha, and I'm a Front alumni. I first want to ask if there's any way that next month's board meeting be fully accessible through Zoom, with public comment option being available as well through Zoom, so that high-risk individuals can participate? If the board has decided that it's not safe enough to have school, then there's many individuals that may feel that it's not safe enough to come to a board meeting and participate. So while there are many of us here today to share our voices, I also want to ask that you think about maybe others that would be here if we were not in a pandemic, and think about ways to make this more accessible. Thank you. There are three demands that have been echoed over the past two months. One, anti-bias training. Two, hiring more teachers of color. And three, diversifying the curriculum. I want to thank Board Member Cavill for putting anti-bias training on the agenda for today. Anti-bias training is not a one-stop solution. It's something that happens, you check the box, and you move on. Anti-bias training needs to be an ongoing process, which educators reflect on their own internalized biases and rectify them, so that students, especially students of color, do not face traumatic experiences in a school environment. There are models for the work that we can do moving forward. Just this past week, Huntley High School District 158 has approved a five-year plan to move towards equity. They started with an Equity Action Coalition that was put together by the district. It was initiated by the district with parents, certified staff, non-certified staff, and with students and other community members. And they came up with an approach that also included these three demands. And while in Huntley, this Equity Action Coalition started five years, or it started a few years ago in 2017, after an extremely racist incident happened, we don't have to wait around for that incident to occur. We can be proactive in making sure that things like that never happen in our own district. I want to move forward with reading some of the data that came out of a FOIA request of 2018 disciplinary data. And as you listen to these numbers, and later I'll share some stories that are on the D21 Committee for Justice page, please think about if whatever solutions that you're thinking about in your head to address solutions and work towards equity, if that prevents these individual incidents from repeating. So for the student discipline data from 2018, although Black students make up 6% of the D21 student population, they make up 24% of school suspensions, 18% of police referrals, and 38% of school-related arrests. Although Latinx students make up 25% of the student population, they make up 39% of school suspensions and 35% of school-related arrests. And we just saw the promotion of so many people into positions of power within our own district.
There are models for the work that we can do moving forward. Just this past week, Huntley High School District 158 has approved a five-year plan to move towards equity. They started with an Equity Action Coalition that was put together by the district. It was initiated by the district with parents, certified staff, non-certified staff, and with students and other community members. And they came up with an approach that also included these three demands. And while in Huntley, this Equity Action Coalition started five years... or it started a few years ago in 2017 after an extremely racist incident happened, we don't have to wait around for that incident to occur. We can be proactive in making sure that things like that never happen in our own district. I want to move forward with reading some of the data that came out of a FOIA request of 2018 disciplinary data. And as you listen to these numbers, and later I'll share some stories that are on the D-211 Committee for Justice page, please think about if whatever solutions that you're thinking about in your head to address solutions and work towards equity, if that prevents these individual incidents from repeating. So for the student discipline data from 2018, although Black students make up six percent of the D-211 student population, they make up twenty-four percent of school suspensions, eighteen percent of police referrals, and thirty-eight percent of school-related arrests. Although Latinx students make up twenty-five percent of the student population, they make up thirty-nine percent of school suspensions and thirty-five percent of school-related arrests. And we just saw the promotion of so many people into positions of power within our own district. And while I'm not saying that whatever is happening with this data needs to be intentional racism or explicit racism, many people are moving into positions of power that have held a hand and played a role in issues of disciplinary action towards students. And if we're not taking a role in explicitly identifying what those biases are, why these numbers are showing such a glaring disparity, then we're not doing anything for students, especially students of color. I'm gonna continue with my time by reading through some of the different stories that I've seen on this page. Okay, I'll first start off. "The school cup pulled me out of class freshman year and showed me pictures of myself. For context, I'm Indian." "Entering and leaving a bathroom. He told me to just confess now so the punishment wouldn't be as bad, and I had no idea what he was talking about. So he pulled out a picture of graffiti in the bathroom with Arabic Persian-looking script on it, and it said 'The Beginning is Near' in English. He said I was being investigated for terrorism and had to pull up the Wikipedia page for Hindi and explain that my family's language doesn't use the same writing system. I really didn't realize it at the time, but that's high-key racial profiling. From 2014." Next story. "When the conversations around college and planning for college were discussed, upon walking into the meeting with my counselor, he basically told me that he would help me sign up for Harvard. He never discussed other options or even mentioned my plans or what I desire. This had a huge impact on my life today. I do think that if I was guided to talk about and explore other options that were available, I'd potentially be in a different spot than I am today." Conant, 2009. So this is two of the stories that are on this page, and to me, they explain implicit bias training and why there is a need for very strong implicit bias training for all levels. On this page, there's also about like five stories specifically about hall monitors at Palatine High School. I didn't go to Palatine High School, I can't speak to that specifically. But if you look through these stories, there's a pattern. And when there's a pattern, you need to do something that addresses that systematic racism that's occurring. To end, I will say that there is a rally that is happening this Saturday at Palatine High School. I believe there's other students that are gonna be talking about this rally, and I would invite you all to please join the student community, the community at large, at this rally at Palatine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Kaya, you're up, and Nikhil Bade, you're on deck, please.
Hi, I'm Ali Kaya Totakura. I'm a junior at Palatine High School. I'm here to ask you, the board, to put the hall monitors at D-211 through anti-racism training so they can stop conforming to racial bias. These hall monitors have consistently been displaying clear signs of blatant racism from the moment I walked into school, from IDing Hispanic and Black students more than white ones to letting me walk across the hallway without a hall pass but sending certain fellow peers to the office for the same reason. They have been discriminating against the Black and Hispanic students. If you were to ask any student at Palatine High School, ninety-nine percent of them will say that they have witnessed racial bias from hall monitors. And I'm gonna share one specific story that I've gone through, that I've witnessed last year. My friends and I were waiting for our parents to pick us up after school, and we were sprawled across half the entrance, and no one said anything, the hall monitors didn't say anything. But as soon as a Black kid walked in to call his mom, just to call his mom, he was screamed at by the hall monitor to get out, he's not welcome, that he can't call his mom, hear that he has to leave, he's blocking the entrance, all these things. While I was sitting there with my friends, taking up half the entranceway, I was waiting, when am I gonna be asked to leave? I wasn't asked to leave. That is clear... that is a clear sign of racism, and there has been nothing to stop it. And there are so many more stories about this, and nothing has happened. Nothing has changed from my freshman year to my junior year. I have seen absolutely zero change, and never again will I want to witness this kind of blatant racism. I'm sorry, but I will not walk into a school once a year wearing a blue t-shirt for an anti-bullying campaign if we can't even treat each student equally. So I urge you, I urge you to put these hall monitors through some sort of training so that we can at least represent each student and make them all feel like they're treated equally. Lastly, I urge you all to consider coming to the rally at Saturday at 3:00 PM. Please show up if you want to show your support for Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikhil, you're up, and Sherry Giata Man sundia, you're on deck, please.
Dear Board, my name is Nikhil Bade. You know, although I'm very fortunate to be here because I'm able-bodied, I have, you know, the privilege for proper healthcare, and I am able to, you know, convey what I want to say to you in person. Not a lot of people, especially in our district, have that. And that's why having a Zoom and having other technologies present to have, you know, people say this, what they want to say in person, makes this more accessible. As a public institution, there's a... people have the right to do that. And, you know, I really urge for the next meetings to be in person, especially because, you know, I go back to school, and, you know, I'd still love to be present and engaged during these meetings. Because, you know, this is where I grew up, and this is my education. And so, you know, there's a lot of people that also want the same access. And to kind of start off, I will just read off a narrative that a student shared from Friends. So it goes, "I'm Indian and have long hair. One day, I decided to have my hair down, completely natural. Not only did I hear people compliment my hair as exotic, but my culinary teacher started touching my hair from behind and started talking about how long and thick it was. I was doing a worksheet, and suddenly felt hands feeling my hair. It was terrifying. I didn't know what to do. After my teacher left the rest of my table, asked to also touch my hair. I felt like an animal in a petting zoo." That's one experience, and it's a very valid one. My experience personally being a student at Friends, my senior year was that I was teaching... I was student teaching a class, and it was an English class, and one white student thought it was appropriate to call me a terrorist as a joke. Right, and this is... this was a month before I graduated to end it out. And I took the student down to the office, and there was nothing that was... that happened. I mean, the only thing that was there was the sorry. However, if there was a teacher there that was... that knew how that felt, if there was a teacher there for that student who asked to touch their hair, who knew his experiences or who knew their background, that would have been completely different. The hiring of teachers of color is more... is so imperative these days for, you know, especially a district where there's around... around, I believe the number is fifty-four percent of students of color, while the makeup of full-time employees that are teachers are eighty-eight percent. And this was 2019 ISBE data that's public. So the point being is that the hiring of teachers of color as a model for these students to show success, for the district to live up to that mission of educating students of the next generation, is meaning that these students don't have the hurdles or don't have these emotional, psychological, and physical barriers for them to access the quality of education where they don't feel like they're threatened or where they don't feel like their identity is of question or, you know, that they don't feel like they're at a zoo, being looked at, and being considered exotic. And the last thing I'll say to end this out is, as my peers have said, there is a rally at Palatine High School on the fifteenth. Allyship is one thing, right, being there, standing up, but standing in solidarity is a completely different thing, right? Right now, I'm here speaking to you. However, I would really appreciate if you were there, speaking to the students, because I think that shows solidarity of the students that we represent and moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, you're up, and Nabila Said, you're on deck, please.
Hello, I'm Cherry Garamunla. That is how my last name is pronounced, Garamunla. Firstly, I request that the next board meeting have a public comment through online or Zoom. Today, I'm going to talk about how the racial bias in our schools go acknowledged, unacknowledged. I myself have experienced students using racist language against my peers that were draped as jokes. One of these times was when a handful of students and I were in discussion groups with our teachers, and we were talking about our experiences already that was set up by the school. My friend, who is Black and on the football team, was talking about his so-called team would constantly use the N-word and say, quote, "It's okay, bro. You know it's a joke," and laughed it off. This was very shocking to hear. Nothing was done about this situation. It is not the fault of the student for not bringing you up to the staff because the students clearly did not understand the gravity of the situation. But the problem lies in how this happened in the first place. We cannot blame teenage angst for these conflicts. If students and adults can find the understanding to wear a mask, they can understand that racism is its own pandemic. Myself and others want to see action taken against these students in a way where we can foster an anti-racist community. This cannot be a one-time action as well. We, as a community, would like to see long-term change between student and staff relationships. And now I will be reading from multiple experiences from our school that my friend Anusha has already talked about, and different experiences. I had anonymous name, my senior year teacher, either 2007 or 2008. I cannot remember if I had her first or second semester, but myself and one other student had practiced Judaism, which she was aware of, and she made several antisemitic comments during class. What I specifically remember was when she was talking about going on blind dates to pass, and she was on a date with a guy who, in her words, seemed okay at first, but then I found out he was Jewish, and I think that's just disgusting. There was also a day she had the entire class go to opposing sides of the room based on personal life experiences, some of which included, go to one side if you've ever had sex, the other side you haven't. If you drank alcohol, smoked weed, and cheated on someone you weren't dating. When myself and three other students, all males, went to the side of not having done any of those things, she singled me out and specifically said, "Really? You've never smoked weed? Okay, I believe that." Students laughed, and though peer pressure never affected me, I felt incredibly embarrassed for having not participated when my teacher, who I respected, singled me out and didn't believe me. Palatine. These are the situations I would really like to see not happen in our schools. It's really disappointing to see not only students, but staff as well, take part in these terrible conflicts. I want to see change in the way that students and staff and peers and friends can feel like they're equal and they're allies, and we can come to a safe place. We cannot just learn about curriculum, but we can learn about each other's experiences and embrace each other's cultures. Thank you.
Thank you. Nabila, you're up, and Roshni Arun, you're on deck, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nabila, and I'm a Friends alumni. I just want to come up here and talk about these past few months where so many students, alumni, and community members have been showing up at these board meetings time and time again, have been submitting public comments, have been showing up at these protests at Hoffman Estates that happened in the past few weeks, are organizing protests in the future. And it seems like the primary way to communicate with the board is through these meetings. Yet, it seems like students, alumni, and community members aren't being listened to. So many of us have emailed and have asked for anti-bias training, more diverse staff, and even in the email correspondence I've had with board members and my peers have had, it seems like many of you believe that things aren't as bad as they actually are or that things are going great. And I would love for you guys to correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like, based off the experiences we've been having, that's not the case. And even when so many people are calling attention to the fact that it's not, you've heard of the group before, D-211 Committee for Justice. I encourage you all, I implore you all, to please follow them on Instagram and please follow them on Facebook. Every single day, there's a new post of a student's experience with racism. And so many stories just seem to be piling on top of one another, and so much is coming out into the open, yet it feels like we're talking to a brick wall. And I would really like the board to listen to the students you serve. Someone mentioned earlier that District 158, which includes Huntley High School, is literally about to roll out a five-year framework which addresses equity and improves student educational experiences. They're aiming to make improvements across five categories, including opportunity and access, curriculum and instruction, professional learning and development, school, family, and commuter relationships, and recruitment, hiring, and retention. Every single category has actionable goals, and every single category has success indicators. When I heard that a district like 158 was doing it, I was thinking, what is one of the largest districts in Illinois, District 211, doing when they have so many students coming up upset, disappointed, angry about their personal experiences at one of these schools? And we're bringing about these conversations that D-211 should have been having for a long time, and we need the board to acknowledge that they've heard our asks and will actually explore them. So when you discuss items for future discussion today, I ask all of you to please address the public comments that were made. I know that you guys can't address them right now, but later on, please acknowledge that you've heard what we're saying and that you will consider exploring them or will have a presentation on them in a future meeting, and will take actionable steps to show that you care about these students and our experiences. And please, once again, hire, recruit, and retain more teachers of color. Please incorporate mandatory ethnic studies in school curriculums. And once again, resonating with what my fellow peer said, please make the ability to give public comment more accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. Roshni Arun?
Yeah.
And then on deck, we have Nithya Arun, please.
Hello, I'm Roshni Arun. I'm a junior at Palatine High School, and right now, I'm gonna propose a change that we could make in order to fight systemic racism. We need to proactively change the curriculum. We need to thoroughly address the struggles that Black people have faced in this country. Right now, we are overlooking racism and every single thing Black people have gone through because it's uncomfortable for white teachers to talk about. Instead of putting the Black people who have been through slavery, who have faced racism throughout four hundred years of this country's history, we put ahead the presidents who are outwardly racist, who support the KKK, who always... who are the ones who actually own slaves. This year was the first year that I actually learned about Juneteenth. June nineteenth is when slaves were actually abolished, slavery was actually abolished. I'm ashamed to say this. I was supposed to learn this through my history class, but I wasn't able to do that because of our curriculum. That's why I'm saying we need to put focus on Black history as well because that is a big part of this country, and that is what has made this country what it is today. And another example of this is also with Christopher Columbus. And now I'm bringing up this example because I'm saying that we need to do this as early as we can. With Christopher Columbus in first grade itself, our teachers used to say that he is the one who founded America. He is the one who is great. But in reality, I learned this last year when I was in AP US History, he raped and he killed thousands of Native Americans. How is it fair for us to learn about this in tenth grade when all our life, we have been told that Christopher Columbus was basically a king? That's not fair to us at all. And that's why we need to have a change in curriculum to make sure that the minorities in this country are actually heard. Thank you, and please come to the rally this Saturday.
Thank you. Nithya Arun, please. And Laura Plata, you are on deck, please.
Hello, my name is Nithya Arun. I am a Palatine High School alumni, graduated in 2018, and I'm currently a student at the University of Michigan School of Public Health. On May 25th, 2020, George Floyd was murdered by a member of the Minneapolis Police Department. This catalyzed a movement to bring recognition to the fact that the Black community is systemically oppressed. Many took to social media as well as the streets to voice their support for the Black community. While this is still powerful, it does not amount to much unless concrete steps are taken to implement policies that ameliorate the disparities seen between the Black community and their non-Black people of color and white counterparts. One of these disparities being the education gap. As one of the largest school districts in Illinois, District 211 has an obligation to not only acknowledge the ongoing events, but to respond with action to ensure that Black and Brown students are in an environment where their race doesn't pose a barrier to their success. With that being said, a couple of my peers and I assembled a petition listing specific demands for the board. I will go into two of those demands more in depth. Up first is the creation of a student advisory board. All five schools in District 211 must create a student advisory board designed specifically to address concerns surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion, hereafter known as DENI. Creating a board that allows for student feedback on DENI policies holds the district accountable for executing said policies. The latent benefit is that the school can offer more leadership opportunities for students. The board should also be made up of individuals committed to the advancement- The board should also be made up of individuals committed to the advancement of DENI in their respective schools and represent the demographics of the school. Counselors and faculty are highly encouraged to help structure meetings and conversations in a constructive way while incorporating student opinions. A student advisory board will allow for accountability on the school's part as well as show true commitment to making social change in District 211. My second demand is that we must have a mandatory class that teaches aspects of social justice in the same way that health classes are mandatory. If students at D211 were to take a social justice class, then these students will be able to become better citizens of the world. This class should address topics such as what identity means, socialization, micro and macro aggressions, oppression, and intersectionality. Topics like those aforementioned play into students' day-to-day experiences in and outside of the classroom. This will end the cycle of racism and otherisms experienced by students of color. Lastly, I want to add that failure to implement said demands, not only my demands, but the demands brought to your attention by our previous speakers, is a slap in the face to the 54% of students of color who comprise the D211 student body. You, as the board of the largest high school district in Illinois, need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to focus my comment on the demand that D211 implement mandatory anti-bias training for all faculty and staff across the district. While members of this board mentioned both that, A, such training already existed in D211, but B, that I would consider implementing a new training offered by the Illinois School Board of Education to be discussed at this meeting, I speak to emphasize that if such a training does exist, it has done a dismal job of preventing racism, discrimination, and harassment by teachers and staff towards students from occurring. And that as a consequence, it is imperative that this board take very seriously the demand that continuous anti-bias professional development be implemented to ensure that racism and discrimination are not tolerated anywhere in D211. I present the two following stories collected by D211 Community for Justice to offer as evidence of racism and discrimination by D211 teachers and staff that is symptomatic of broader systemic racism and discrimination in this district. First, from a Palatine alum, class of 2012. I was always embarrassed to share where I lived. I would lie to adults about my living situation. Most teachers I had, especially current teachers, would make negative comments about students that lived on Baldwin Street. For reference, Baldwin is an area in Palatine that has predominantly immigrant and low-income residents living there. They would say students that came from that street/neighborhood would have no future or would end up joining gangs. I would lie to most of my teachers because I was involved in sports and have good, positive white friends. I also felt like lying about the fact that my parents were undocumented when in reality they were, that they were documented when in reality they were undocumented at the time. All of these lies were on, were towards adults at PHS. I felt like lying to these adults because of the comments they always made and because I never truly felt safe. Constant comments like, "You're so white, you talk white, you're not like the others, you're a great student considering everything," were comments I was used to hearing at PHS. Such a comment reflects a blatant form of criminalizing students of color. These comments by teachers and staff reflect an explicit bias against students from Baldwin or similar low-income areas inhabited predominantly by people of color in the district as viewing them as having no potential, which undoubtedly impacts the quality of education they receive. Why did this alleged training, which all teachers received, not prevent PHS faculty from viewing students from Baldwin as not having any future or fated to join gangs? Second story. I was getting a temporary ID from a hall monitor, and he said, quote, "Don't you guys know buying a new ID is much cheaper than buying temps all the time? I'm going to have to send you up to ESL Math so they can teach you how to add money. I am Mexican." So I responded, "Why do you need to do that? I speak better English than you." When I reported to then-Principal Steiger, he made a confused face, then cleared his throat, and said, "I don't think he meant it that way, but I'll talk to him." If faculty at PHS received anti-bias training as board member Kramer suggested, why was it Principal Steiger's response to the student as one to excuse this person's behavior? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight that did not have an opportunity to sign the yellow sheets when they came in that would still like to address the board? Please come forward to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Varshini, and I am a Fremd 2016 graduate. I'm speaking today as an alum, far removed from any potential disciplinary repercussions. The same does not hold true for D211 students and educators, who may be fearful of expressing their appetite for change, an appetite for change that will likely get squashed by the immovable force that is D211. And I know that at the end of the day, there are no stakes for me, and I will face no consequences aside from perhaps a disapproving glare from a board member. There are a few forces more frighteningly terrifying in this world than D211's inertia on these matters. I sat racking my brain for hours today, trying to come up with something to say for tonight's public comment portion, something that would move the needle ever so slightly. It feels like a futile effort, knowing that this needle has not been moved at all by over 50 emails asking for an ethnic studies class as a requirement or efforts to diversify the hiring pipeline. Even now, as I strongly urge you to prioritize these matters, I can't help but feel that it's a hopeless battle. I'm greatly disappointed, and I'm very exhausted. But again, in spite of my frustration for D211, I ask you to bring these demands to the table. The push for ethnic studies in particular is not a fringe movement spurred by activists with a particular agenda. It's been shown to narrow the achievement gap, provide an expansive outlook, and affirm the identities of students traditionally left out of white-centric narratives. It's not enough to say that individuals such as the now-former educator Jeannie Hedgepath were bad eggs. Educators such as her were allowed to thrive in a system that maintained the status quo, the status quo in this case referring to the mantle of white supremacy. There have been countless testimonies shared by D211 students, whose individual stories I will not take the liberty to share, that it would behoove you all as board members who, in theory, care about the well-being of their students to try and understand the system you're a part of. A system with careless educators with little regard or sensitivity to their students, a system that gaslights students undergoing severely traumatic experiences with racism, and a system that, above all, refuses to act. As board members, it's now your move. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. The next item of business, we have a public hearing on inter-fund transfer. First suggested motion is that the public hearing on the authorization of a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $1,511,361 from the school district's Life Safety Fund to its Operations and Maintenance Fund is now open. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Ms. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding the inter-fund transfer? Okay, we have a second motion that the public hearing on the authorization of the permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $1,511,361 from the school district's Life Safety Fund to its Operations and Maintenance Fund is now closed. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Next, we have presentations. We have a presentation tonight on progress toward meeting district academic goals in 2019, 2020. Dr. Small?
Thank you. Each year, the leadership team of our district evaluates the success of achieving our goals. Tonight, we'll present the information that surrounds our goals from the previous school year. The data is used to focus our goals for the upcoming school year based on each school's individual challenges. We present this information in August as a critical component of our data, our AP results, and those do not come in until mid-July. Tonight is my pleasure to introduce you, the most dedicated and hardworking group of leaders I've had the opportunity to work with. Joshua Schumacher is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Danielle Hauser, Director of Instructional Improvement. Julie Novak, Principal of Connet High School. Kurt Teniper, Principal of Fremd High School. Tony Medina, Principal of Palatine High School. Mike Arthur, Principal of Hoffman Estates High School. Brian Harland, Principal of Schaumburg High School. Mr. Schumacher?
Good evening. We are excited to share information about our progress towards meeting the Township High School District 211 academic goals during the 2019, 2020 school year. Tonight, we have several integral leaders here to present. Dr. Danielle Hauser, Director of Instructional Improvement, and myself will present aggregated and disaggregated data for the district as a whole, while each principal will present school-specific achievement data and explanations about the practical applications put in place to achieve these goals. Our current academic goals were implemented during the 2015, 2016 school year and are based in measurements presented by the Illinois State Board of Education under the Every Student Succeeds Act. The concept of educational equity forms the foundation for these goals as they support the drive to provide access and opportunity to rigorous coursework and post-high school success. Our goals are separated into two categories. On the left, there are six goals under the category of Core Academic Indicators. On the right, there are five goals under the category of Student Success and School Quality Indicators. As you know, the historic school closure that began in March significantly impacted many of our traditional educational processes. While the closure did not impact our ability to pivot and continue to provide a quality educational experience, it did affect the outcome of two of our goals. Specifically, we are unable to report progress towards the goals related to the attainment of critical learning standards and the SAT benchmarks in math and reading. These assessments were not able to be given during the spring semester. This leaves us with progress towards eight goals that we will present to you. Starting us off tonight will be Dr. Danielle Hauser. The goal of advancing students who begin their District 211 high school career enrolled in developmental math or English courses to regular level or quota courses is driven by our belief in educational equity. We know that the starting level your freshman year does not need to define our students' experience throughout their entire high school career. Our teachers have internalized the practice of fostering relationships with students, building their confidence in critical skills and content, and then encouraging them to advance to the next level, both within a school year and across multiple years.
As Mr. Schumacher stated, where a student starts does not have to be where they end. What you do not see in the chart is the number of students who were moved up a level prior to starting freshman year. The data is based on only 406 students in the class of 2020, which had approximately 3,000 students. District 211 faculty and staff are committed to encouraging a growth mindset. The English department members work with students to help them understand grades are not a defining moment of character or ability, rather a snapshot in time. Students, parents, and teachers understand the power of yet and being able to advocate for students' learning. The students may not understand yet, but by embracing resource centers, tutoring centers, talking with a trusted advisor, or any of our additional supports, students are moving up and out of our developmental courses. In addition, the English department is focused on a skill-based curriculum instead of a content-based curriculum. Focusing on skills rather than content allows teachers to select relevant, rigorous texts students can both relate to and engage in. Over the last four years, each school has been focusing on equity, diversity, and creating a trauma-responsive school. Through professional learning opportunities and school committees, teachers have engaged in conversations that have led them to review instructional material, making changes to address student interest and aptitude. Professional learning teams work to create a sense of belonging in the classroom, allowing students to have voice and choice. Since the class of 2016, District 211 has increased the number of students moving out and up out of developmental coursework by at least 13%. Keep in mind, the chart on the screen does not reflect the number of students who were moved out of developmental courses prior to starting freshman year. There are a number of students who enroll in Project Excel and Incoming Freshman Academy prior to freshman year who we immediately look to move up when the students have demonstrated understanding of the skills necessary to be successful at the next level.
Developmental English courses focus its attention on our students who need the greatest literacy support as they are not meeting grade-level benchmarks. Over the past five years, Hoffman Estates High School has seen 28% growth in its students who have advanced out of developmental English courses and into college prep-level coursework by their senior year. This has been achieved through a comprehensive approach, which includes summer intervention to our incoming freshman and sophomore academies, and pairing a reading strategies course to the students' English course in the freshman and sophomore year. The combination of English and reading supports offered at the freshman and sophomore levels allow our teachers to focus on the skills that students need to be successful, not only at higher curricular levels within our high schools, but also in the post-secondary world. In fact, within our reading classes specifically, students are only able to exit the class once they have demonstrated that their skills are more on par with their college-bound peers. Junior and seniors approaching benchmarks also receive additional support through a reading improvement course paired with their English course, if they have not already advanced in the college coursework. Slide eight further shows the importance of the work being done in our developmental English classes as we continuously work to close the achievement gap, particularly with our historically marginalized students. We know that reading and writing are valuable skills in both communication and in the acquisition of information. The rise in technology means increased demands for higher literacy, and the consequences are great for those who fall short. Studies show that people with advanced reading and writing skills have more opportunities in school and professionally than those who do not develop these skills.
During the 2019, 2020 school year, District 211 was included on the prestigious Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. This marks the fifth year in a row that we have had the honor of being included. In order to achieve this recognition, we must increase participation in our AP courses by at least 4%, increase or maintain the percentage of Black and Hispanic students taking exams, while also increasing the percentage of passing, and maintain a 70% or higher number of students earning a 3, 4, or 5. In addition to advanced placement courses, District 211 continues to develop partnerships with Harbor College, Triton College, College of DuPage, and the University of Illinois to offer over 60 dual-credit opportunities for students. We have worked diligently over the past five years to research, develop, and implement systems that not only allow increased access to advanced placement and dual-credit coursework, but also encourage opportunities for all students, typically, or especially typically underrepresented students in these courses. Mr. Harland, Principal of Schaumburg High School, and Mr. Arthur, Principal at Hoffman Estates High School, will now share with you some of the ways that their schools have
Over the last five years, Schaumburg High School has increased the percentage of students enrolled in at least one AP or dual-credit course from 73% to 85% of the graduating class. The epicenter of this increase was the emphasis on using relationships to educate students about these opportunities and reaffirming their ability to be successful in both AP and dual-credit courses. Regarding dual-credit courses, counselors at Schaumburg High School began having purposeful, structured conversations with their students about their post-high school plans. These conversations really took shape with the implementation of the D211 Student Readiness Plan, which helped guide the shift from normal class scheduling meetings towards conversations focused on college and career exploration. Having these conversations with students earlier in their high school careers helped them identify individual areas of interest and made them realize that opportunities for dual-credit courses existed across many curriculums. Schaumburg High School started to systematically identify underrepresented students in AP courses during the 2017, 2018 school year through the collaboration with equal-opportunity schools. Students in underrepresented groups were identified through a thorough survey and recommendation process. Students that were identified as those with potential to be successful in an AP course were connected to a trusted adult who reinforced their abilities and assured them there would be plenty of support along the way. After enrolling, the strong system of support was implemented for these students that included AP university sessions before school with a tutor, an AP resource room students could attend during free period, a peer tutoring system, and ongoing monitoring of student grades to identify students that need additional support. Through these efforts, we were able to narrow the opportunity gap that existed for underrepresented students. Through these efforts, we were able to narrow the opportunity gap that existed for underrepresented students at Schaumburg High School. One demographic that I would like to highlight on this slide is the increase in the percentage of Black students enrolled in AP or dual-credit courses from 44% to 73% over the last five years. This highlights our commitment to closing equity and opportunity gaps at Schaumburg High School and within our district.
The Hoffman Estates High School five-year trend showing an increase in graduated class participation in at least one AP or dual-credit course shown in Slide 14 is attributed to a purposeful strategy of creating equitable opportunities for all students. This strategy includes outreach to future hawks through connections with our feeder schools, identification of current hawks through indicators other than academic performance as the sole gateway into AP or dual-credit. These indicators include resilience, growth mindset, and a strong work ethic, to name a few. These identified students are then encouraged to enroll through conversations by those who know them best, their teachers and guidance counselors. Once enrolled, students are supported through academic supports like AP Study Lab that help to further develop and refine the executive functioning skill students need to be successful in rigorous courses. Students also receive the social-emotional support they need from trusted adults who are there to provide encouragement and practical strategies to navigate a more robust and rigorous curriculum. Slide 15 shows the direct impact these efforts have had on students of all subgroups with significant impact on our Black, Hispanic, and economically disadvantaged students. Increasingly, these students are leaving Hoffman Estates High School better equipped to succeed regardless of their post-high school plans. In particular, I would like to share a story about a 2020 graduate who by all accounts would have never taken in the AP course or dual-credit course if it were not for the strategy described. Omar comes from a loving, single-parent home with two siblings. His mother worked multiple jobs to support their family. In fact, Omar reports that at first he was resentful towards his mom because she was always working and not at home. By all academic benchmarks, Omar was an average student upon entry into Hoffman Estates High School, and he viewed college as unattainable. Omar was enrolled in our Project Excel program and received the encouragement of his teachers and guidance counselor. Omar's confidence grew, and Omar began to see college as a real option. He also developed an appreciation for his mother and how hard she had to work to provide for their family. With his great work ethic, Omar began to take academic risks and enroll in more rigorous coursework. In total, Omar successfully completed seven AP courses and one dual-credit course throughout his sophomore through senior years. He did this while holding a part-time job and representing Hoffman Estates High School as a two-sport athlete. Omar will attend the University of Illinois this fall, where he will study architecture on a full academic scholarship.
We realize that each District 211 learner and their home situation are different, but we still work to prepare all students for access to the widest amount of post-high school opportunities that we can. While our desire is that all students graduate from our schools with college credit already earned, it is not the reality for every learner. In order to increase equity and ensure access and opportunity for all students, we have worked collaboratively with Harper College, the Illinois State Board of Education, and the Illinois Community College Board to develop and offer what we call transitional or portable math and English courses. The term portable refers to the fact that they serve as an on-ramp to all Illinois community colleges and participate in four-year institutions. These courses are specifically designed for seniors who are not projected to be ready for college-level math or English by the end of their senior year. Our goal is to continue to increase the number of students who enroll and are successful in these courses so that they can gain direct access to college-bearing, to credit-bearing college coursework after graduation. Mr. Harland and Mr. Medina will share information relative to Schaumburg and Palatine's work towards this goal.
As Mr. Schumacher just mentioned, one of our goals is to make sure that our students are ready to take college-credit-bearing courses their first year out of high school. M434 is designed to be a support for seniors who are not projected to be ready for college-level math right after high school. Over the course of the last five years, Schaumburg High School has exhibited amazing growth in the percentage of students meeting these prerequisite requirements to enter college-credit-bearing courses, rising in the area of math, rising from 35% in 2016 to 79% this school year. I recently had the opportunity to talk with one of the teachers who taught the M434 course over the last few years. As our conversation progressed, he kept coming back to the same concept, connecting the students individually and making sure they knew that being in the course should not be seen as a negative, but instead be seen as an extraordinary opportunity. Over the last five years, the team also focused on increasing remediation opportunities for students before simply moving on to the next concept. After each assessment, students had to reflect on their mistakes, identify the specific concepts they were struggling with, and make their own plan for improvement. Students began taking ownership of their own learning. They took time to teach students the self-advocacy skills they needed to be successful after graduation. The teacher I spoke with also shared a story about a student named Adam. He had Adam his freshman year, and the student struggled with his first-year math course, many times exhibiting off-test behaviors that would distract others. Coming into the school year this year, the teacher noticed he again had Adam in class as a senior. Within the first couple of weeks of the class, he noticed that he had begun to emerge as a leader in the classroom, encouraging other students along as he brought bought into the idea of this class being an extraordinary opportunity. The teacher stated that Adam met the prerequisite course requirements for college math courses next year, and that one of the happiest moments of his career was when he had the opportunity to write Adam a letter of recommendations he'd be aiming to apply for colleges last fall.
At Palatine High School, I would like to acknowledge the accomplishments of our students and staff in our E423 course, Introduction to Rhetoric. E423 is a course designed for students who are not yet meeting college readiness standards at the start of their senior year. The students that are targeted to participate in this course have achieved between a 430 and a 480 on the evidence-based reading and writing section of their junior-year SAT. Teacher recommendation is also a component. Success in this course for these students, many of whom have been identified as at-risk or economically disadvantaged students, is life-changing. Students who succeed in this course are able to start Harper College with a college-level English course rather than beginning with a remedial, non-college-credit-bearing course. Our teachers use a data-driven approach to identify our students' strengths and weaknesses in literacy. This allows teachers to find texts at the appropriate reading levels that will enhance their information processing skills. Students also choose nonfiction texts that not only are level-appropriate, but also compelling to the reader. Using targeted readings allows the teachers to enhance the student's articulation of their own arguments as well as their ability to process information onto paper. This is a wonderful example of how our teachers are promoting critical thinking to expand the student's ability to learn. Lastly, the teachers in our district have a strong collaborative relationship, not only among the schools, but also with Harper College. This allows for our staff to calibrate our learning targets and expectations for students along multiple fronts. As you can see from the following chart, the students enrolled in this course are a great representation of our student body. Students from all ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds are showing success in this course. This is a credit to the wonderful support system and learning environment that our staff has created for all of our students.
District 211 serves more than 950 students considered English-language learners by the Illinois State Board of Education. These students and their families speak 39 different languages in their homes. Among these students, 27% are duly identified and receive special education services in conjunction with English learner services. The Illinois ESA Plan established the goal of having every English learner student reach English language proficiency within five years of being identified. In order to measure this goal, the Illinois State Board of Education selected an instrument called the Access Assessment. This stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State. Although the ways to reach proficiency are complicated due to the consideration for the number of years that a student has been identified as an EL, a scale score for each specified grade level, and the progress to proficiency target, students in general need to meet a specific score in order to be considered proficient for the year. As you can see from the slide in front of you, our percentage of EL students meeting the demonstrated growth has declined over the past three years. However, we were able to significantly slow that rate of growth last year. While I am certainly not one to make excuses about our progress, I do want you to understand three factors that significantly affect our percentage of students demonstrating growth. First of all, the data is based on the idea of the student being present for testing two years in a row. While this may seem like a trivial concept, if the student is not present for two consecutive years, they automatically count as no growth for our system. We believe that this has affected the data that you see in front of you. The second factor that accounts for this is that the growth trajectory of an English learner is not linear. Statistically speaking, we see more growth during the first few years of an EL designation. This is significant to us because nearly one-third, or over 375 of our EL students have been in US schools receiving services for more than seven years. Finally, each year of high school is assigned what I'm going to call an arbitrary growth target, and these do not change whether you started speaking English this year or started speaking it 10 years ago. This affects our EL students that move into our country and are initially classified. You have likely heard the term Power of 15 many times before. This refers to our desire to have as many students as possible earn 15 college credits before they graduate from our high schools. Functionally, this is done through completing dual-credit coursework or earning at least a score of three on the AP exam. We believe so strongly in this for two reasons. First, research indicates that early earning early college credit is among the most effective strategies for promoting higher rates of post-secondary access, persistence, and completion. Additionally, this provides students the opportunity to take on rigorous coursework with the support network that our teachers and school programs provide. The benefits of the Power of 15 extend beyond the student to their families. Dr. Hauser will now explain how our district-wide data, including the financial benefit for our families, and then Mr. Medina will talk about a unique approach that Palatine has taken in order to get their students to take the first steps towards the 15 hours.
The class of 2020 demonstrated their resiliency and commitment towards earning the Power of 15. At a time when many students across the nation decided not to take the AP exams due to school closures, District 211 students stayed on target. We believe this is because the students felt confident and well-prepared to successfully complete the AP exam. Our teachers supported our students from the first day of class through their AP exams. District 211 students' commitment to their learning resulted in students earning scores high enough to achieve early college credit. The percentage of students earning early college credit has continued to increase for each graduating class. Fifteen early college credits is one semester of college. In other words, 34% of District 211 students completed one semester of college during high school. Collectively, the class of 2020 earned 41,357 early college credits. If a student was attending Harper, that is about $2,000 in tuition savings. At Illinois State University, it would be about $5,760, and at the University of Illinois, $9,690. For our off-school community, based on Illinois State's university tuition rate, this is a $15,881,000 savings in college tuition for the class of 2020 District 211 families.
In supporting our district's goal of graduating our students with 15 hours of college credit, I would like to highlight an initiative that was developed by Palatine High School teachers. A few years ago, when we began to move more and more students out of regular-level courses into more advanced placement courses, our staff reported that these students were struggling. One thing I'd like to emphasize is that our staff maintained a great mindset and began to problem-solve. Instead of saying that the students were incorrectly placed in these courses, they came to the conclusion that they just didn't have the right skills and awareness of what it takes to be successful in an AP-level course. They argued that this could be taught. Lo and behold, a group of 10 PHS Advanced Placement teachers came up with the idea of a first-time AP committee. This is a group that is entirely teacher-driven with some administrative support. Their main purpose is to work with students who are entering advanced-level courses for the first time. Teachers initially host meetings for students who have been targeted to pursue an AP-level course for the first time. They inform these students of the rigors of AP, but also encourage them to challenge themselves to take an AP class. Furthermore, this had led to the opening of the AP Resource Center. It's become something different for so many people. Some students utilize our AP Resource Center on a daily basis to get support from not only their teachers, but especially their peers. Some students use it to fulfill their required service hours, and teachers use it to connect with students on a higher level and to promote a stronger sense of community. Throughout the course of last year, there were nearly 2,000 student visits to the Resource Center for AP supports. One of our teachers states one of the most rewarding aspects of the Resource Center was observing students working collaboratively and genuinely enjoying learning. The room was filled with positive energy and students sharing different strategies on how to be successful in their AP classes. Discussions would include specific study strategies or multiple ways of grasping the content. One of our students, who initially began participating simply to facilitate his volunteer hours, could be found in the room daily even after his hours had been completed. He stated, "I just like coming here and helping my classmates. It actually helps me with my classes and has made me a much better student." In closing, our first-time AP committee has led PHS to have an overall retainment of 89% of first-time AP students completing their courses. We are very proud of the work that our AP teachers and students, our AP teachers, are doing for our newest AP students.
From the lens of adult educators, board members, and parents, the benefits of dual-credit courses are many. A rigorous curriculum, credits that can be applied to a student's college degree, financial savings for families, just to name a few. And while students may also see these as benefits, we find that they often enroll in dual-credit courses because they are interested in the content or the opportunity for hands-on learning that is fun and applicable to the real world. So the expansion of opportunities in the dual-credit world is something that we take very seriously. The slide you see now is a perfect representation of the diverse new offerings available to students. At Brent High School, we are offering two new dual-credit courses from this list with more to come in the next few years. For the first time ever, District 211 will be offering a dual-credit art class through Harper College. Teacher Jerry Cargill is excited to teach fine art photography this year, and Dr. Hauser, he tells me he's interested in a few more classes in the next couple of years. We will also be offering Management 111, Introduction to Business Organization. Brent is lucky to have teacher Rob Burkey, who is one of the few business teachers in the district to possess an MBA degree, a requirement to teach many of the dual-credit courses in business. This particular class is a foundational course in the business program at Northern Illinois University. You've heard about Harper College and the NIU partnership to offer a degree in three previous board meetings, and this course is one of the key components of this plan, which will be a tremendous benefit to our students and families.
The development of specific pathways for District 211 coursework aligned with the 16 nationally-recognized career clusters continues through the partnership with local companies and business leaders. Our pathways involve multi-year sequences of courses that integrate core academic knowledge with the technical and occupational knowledge and experiences that prepare students for careers. By combining the rigorous academic coursework with actual experience and team-based challenges, exposure to industry leaders, internships, and industry certification and credentialing, students have a clear path to their future career. The development of our pathways is based in equity as there is a pathway for all students regardless of interest or academic background. The pathways also provide distinct educational plans during high school and create smooth transitions to post-secondary education or employment. Finally, they empower students to make informed post-secondary decisions based on actual knowledge and experience of their field of interest. Dr. Hauser has worked extensively on the development of these pathways and will share with you some of the updates from the last year.
District 211 college and career pathways have been intentionally designed to allow students to move between pathways or confirm their interests. Last year, a graduating senior took courses in both the education and health sciences pathway. Juliana was not sure what she wanted to do post-high school. In addition to coursework, she took advantage of going on a career trip with the school career advisor to Alexian Brothers Hospital. That is when she found out about a child-life specialist. The child-life specialist sits with the child and the family to explain the procedure a child is about to have, answer any questions, and offer supports. They assist the child cope with the challenges of hospitalization and illness. It was the combination of multiple experiences along with faculty and staff that helped Juliana decide on her post-secondary plans. Mr. Tenefer spoke about adding the dual-credit business courses. The additional courses were determined based on the degree-in-three pathway designed with Northern Illinois University and Harper. The college and career pathways have increased opportunities developed for students across multiple organizations. Colleges and universities understand for students to earn an ISBE college and career pathway endorsement, they need to have connections to industry leaders, complete internships, and earn at least six hours in early college credit within the designated pathway. This is one of the reasons why we were able to add two business dual-credit courses and the education dual-credit course. the education dual-credit course. In addition to creating and implementing team-based challenges, adding the industry credentials, and increasing dual-credit offerings, District 211 is working with the Illinois Science Technology Institute and Bosch to develop a teacher externship program. Similar to student internships, teacher externships will be offered during the summer. Teachers will work alongside industry professionals for a specified length of time. Teacher externships are designed to expose teachers to careers and businesses related to their content area. They provide educators a way to work alongside industry professionals to learn how classroom content is applied in the workplace and what skill requirements and opportunities are available in industries related to their subject. This professional learning experience will both enrich and strengthen their teaching and bring relevance to student learning. District 211 is at the forefront of this growing national trend.
High school graduation is a milestone for our students and their families. We also know that it serves as an important predictor of future success. Students who graduate from high school on time are more likely to continue to post-secondary education and training, are more employable, and have higher incomes than students who fail to graduate on time. Interestingly, but not surprisingly, these graduates also have better health outcomes and are less likely to engage in risky behaviors, especially those that lead to incarceration. In 2019, eighty-six percent of high school students in Illinois graduated in four years using an adjusted cohort graduation rate. The state percentage is in line with the national trend of three-quarters of states in the US where graduation rates fall between eighty and eighty-nine percent. For the 2019-2020 school year, the graduation rate in District 211 was ninety-five percent, well above both the national and the state average. This likely isn't a surprise to you, as we have an excellent system of academics and social-emotional support. What you may not realize is that we have maintained a graduation rate above ninety-two percent for the last five years, slowly progressing to our current rate. From an equity lens, we also have systematically increased the graduation rate for our Black, Hispanic, and economically-disadvantaged subgroups, maintaining a rate of at least eight percent above the state average. Conant High School consistently demonstrates one of the highest individual school rates in District 211, and will share information relative to their ninety-eight percent graduation rate during the 2019-2020 school year.
While we celebrate a high graduation rate, two percent of students who do not graduate in four years are among the most vulnerable of our school population. Factors that lead to late graduation or dropping out are well-studied. Most students who drop out report a positive elementary school experience with a pulling away at middle school. Students who drop out of school fall into two categories. One group are referred to as the slow faders. These students drop out in the eleventh or twelfth grade. They often report that there was an academic challenge early on that led to feelings of hopelessness about learning. More commonly, accelerated leavers, or those who stop attending school early in high school, are students who tend to have a number of adverse childhood experiences, or ACs, such as living in poverty, mental health diagnoses, problems at home, and drug and alcohol abuse. Still, even these students report feeling academically abandoned as the key factor that led them to stop attending school. Knowing this, we address graduation rate by focusing on a number of supports that we know will lead to success. I often tell parents and students that we're thinking about their student's last day before their first day. We begin by focusing resources and strategies to keep our freshmen on track, meaning that students have earned at least five full-year course credits by the end of their first year. As you've heard multiple times this evening, the secret sauce is prioritizing relationships and establishing a true sense of belonging for all. We do this by offering multi-tiered systems of support, including group and individual therapies, working hard to connect each student to at least one trusted adult in the schoolhouse, and finding activities, clubs, and sports that foster belonging. These interventions, along with providing academic supports to help students feel academically capable, help us achieve the end-game goal of on-time graduation.
While most of our goals focus specifically on the academic environment, we know that there are other critical aspects of the high school student experience. Participation in high school athletics and activities is a valuable part of the overall experience. Often, these opportunities enhance school engagement, students' sense of belonging, and overall social-emotional health. Being involved in group activities helps students practice time management, organization, and interpersonal skills. Skills that we know are critical in both college and the workforce. These skills are so critical that the Illinois State Board of Education includes student participation rate in the criteria for determining college and career readiness in the Illinois ESSA Plan. Kurt Tennyper and Julian Nowick will now share with you some of the unique opportunities for student involvement available at Friends and Conant High Schools.
As the slide before you illustrates, the percentage of students participating in at least one sport or activity has been on the rise at Friends High School. Obviously, this is part of a concerted effort to increase participation in extracurricular activities because of some of those research-based benefits that Mr. Shinnaker just spoke about. They can be attributed to recruitment efforts at our school, expanded offerings, and most importantly, a focus on relationships. A few years ago, our district partnered with the Positive Coaching Alliance, which focuses on creating positive experiences for athletes, parents, and coaches first, and winning second. At Friends, many of our coaches have embraced these changes to their coaching philosophies, which has resulted in walking advertisements to the students at large that our sports and activities are attractive ways to spend time, effort, and energy. I also think that it's no coincidence that as a result of these new positive philosophies, our athletic teams and competitive activities have excelled in their state series. The community can take great pride in the state trophies and medals, but as the principal of Friends High School, I'm proud of the approach that our coaches and sponsors have adopted to provide fun, rewarding experiences for our students.
Last year, seventy-one percent of students at Conant High School participated in at least one activity group or athletic team. Most of this cohort are involved in more than one activity. While we see a consistent increase in our levels of student involvement, one hundred percent is the goal. We know that students who are connected to our programs after the traditional school day tend to earn a half a point higher overall GPA and are simply more connected to the school with better outcomes across all aspects of adolescent development. Some specific steps that we've taken to work toward increasing student involvement include doing away with posting rosters for sports and activities that require tryouts. Instead, coaches and sponsors meet individually with students to help them determine other opportunities when they do not make a team. This has resulted in creative ways for students to be connected to their preferred sport or activity. Examples include developing a dramaturgy and costuming department in the theater program, building on athletics by increasing the number of team managers, student trainers, and student broadcasters who are critical members of the team. We are also fortunate to have flexibility with creating smaller Group Eight activities that are formed solely based on student interest. This has allowed us to establish clubs like ping-pong clubs, sign language club, and many other special-interest groups. Students appreciate that they have a voice in creating activities that are high interest to them. Another benefit of our Group Eight activities is that we've been able to engage students in clubs that celebrate diversity and focus on equity in ways that are personal and very meaningful to our students. This has led to increased student involvement across all demographics. Last year, two students, Faith and Deja, approached our activities director, Mr. Langer, about starting a club called Black Leader Achievers. This group of students recognized that many diversity programs and messaging often focus on a deficit mindset. Their goal was to educate our community about Afrocentric culture and develop its members' leadership skills. Faith and what started off as a small group of peers worked tirelessly to attract students from many different races to launch Black Leader Achievers. Thanks to the hard work of this club, Conant hosted a wonderful celebration of diversity to help students break down barriers and build greater understanding of each other. We are fortunate to have another specialized club called Latinos Unidos, led by Yami Cortez. This club celebrates and educates students' Latin culture. So Yami and Faith are besties, and they support each other's clubs. They work together to bring attention to issues surrounding equity. Following the events of late spring and summer, we decided to gather members of our Black Leader Achievers Club and continue to meet via Zoom all summer long. Our conversations were inspiring, heartbreaking, enlightening, and motivating. My biggest takeaway from our meetings this summer was recognizing how profound creating space for student voices when determining solutions surrounding issues of equity and anti-racism. As adults, we often understand the issues, and we often think we understand the issues and can best determine solutions. While this critical work should not rest solely upon our students, their voices, experiences, and opinions are essential components of a comprehensive approach to dismantling racism.
As we conclude our presentation this evening, I would like to publicly acknowledge the work of Dr. Hauser and these five principals to not only lead their schools through the preparation and facilitation of the first day of school today, but also for their diligence and preparation in taking part in this presentation and sharing with us the amazing programs, accomplishments, and individual success stories that happen in each of our District 211 schools. We will continue to work on these goals throughout the 2020-2021 school year. At this time, we would like to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? We'll start over here tonight.
Sure. So I'd like a little bit more information about the, forgive me, I'm trying to find the slide, and I'm not finding it, the AP program that was talked about at Palatine High School that was so successful. Congratulations, Miss Shaw, it's wonderful. But I'd like to know, like, when supports like that are offered? Are they offered during the school day, before, or after school? Like, when does that club need one of those services available to students?
So it's open every period of the day. It's staffed by somebody, usually by a staff member who's under duty, as opposed to, like, a study hall supervision. They choose to be in there. And before and after school, multiple times a week, we have, you know, an AP Calculus teacher who wants to host a review session with a group of students, or a group of students says, "I want to get together with my classmates and study." They will take that space. In the morning, there's a sign-up, and, you know, that happens multiple times a week as well. So all the services are available before school, every period of the day, as well as after school.
That's good. I'm sure that's part of the reason why it's been very successful. Let's see. And then, you know, I appreciate the explanation with the decline in the English-language learners, I guess. I have two questions there. The first is, you know, we as a board, we're looking at these numbers and these charts, which, you know, measure our success. But I want to know how that declining trend is impacting individual students. So when we say, you know, there are these particular barriers to us having a linear trajectory, you know, like we do in other school areas, I want to know how that impacts individual students. Does that go on some sort of a record? Does it make those learners feel like they're less capable of progressing? You know, how does that, kind of, how does that trend that we're seeing here have an individual impact on students?
So our students, they each get individual support, and there are EL resource programs similar to what Mr. Medina has explained. All throughout the course of the school, they have support in their schedule. This metric is from a single test that they take in February of each school year. And so that was in the description of why we believe the trend is going down. It's more not about the actual individual student's success or meeting the proficiency. We believe that individually, the students are meeting the proficiency and growing. However, the way the metric is determined, if a student is absent or wasn't here last year or didn't test, then they become a zero score for that metric. And so it's not, what you're seeing, our belief is that it's not about student growth or the success, it's more about how the metric is determined.
Good. So that score, then, that doesn't follow them around like in KCC number would, you know, sort of impact them in any, any different way?
I do not believe the access score is on a student's record.
The one benefit I would say, though, is our exit rate is above the state average, and one of the great things that we've partnered with Harper on is that when students do exit out of our program, Harper will then eliminate them from the possibility of being put into developmental English learner classes. So through our collaboration with Harper, the only thing that does carry with them is when they exit, they're not seen as still an English learner, that the colleges are accepting and respecting that. The other thing with that rate is students can still earn the seal by literacy. So that is another exciting thing that many of our students work to achieve.
And my last question would be, you know, when we're looking at Slide 33 toward the end, you know, there seems to me a fairly significant disparity among some of those groups there, and, here we go. So what are the barriers that we've identified in those first two categories with students who are Hispanic, who are economically disadvantaged? Are there specific barriers that we've identified in pushing those numbers up as high as we see other numbers on the same chart?
Sure. Are you speaking to the participation in the activities?
Yeah.
For the first two, one of the largest barriers is requirements at home, or things that the students need to do for their families. It is basically the narrative or the qualitative description. One of the things that each school has done is really make this more of an individual involvement piece, as opposed to just posting marketing that you can join this club. They've built in systems where they will talk to smaller groups or classes, or even individually, when a counselor meets with a student, "What are you interested in? What would you like to get involved in?" And then that's where we get the qualitative information about a barrier of not being able to do it after school, per se. But a lot of what our schools have then done is move some clubs before school, so that students can participate at other times as well. And that's part of the increase you see, is part of us learning that individual story and then being able to pivot from that and say, "Okay, we still want you to be involved. What can we do to match what your situation is?"
That's right. You preempted my last question, because, you know, do we give students plus flexibility to meet, not just after school, but maybe even, I don't know, during lunchtime, other times where the students are more comfortable? Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you asking that question.
Absolutely. Great. Thanks, Ms. Kepel. First of all, thank you very much for everybody who put this program and presentation together. Very informative. I think we could have sat here all night listening to demographic breakdowns by school. So thank you for sharing highlights by school and every principal having an opportunity to put together information, going down to the demographic breakdowns for their particular programs and schools. So thanks for all the work that went into this. My question is particularly around the power of fifteen. I think it's a huge, huge value and advantage for our district and our students. So back on Slide 23, which talks about the percentage of students graduating, by graduating class earning at least fifteen credits. We are at thirty-four percent for the class of 2020, and I was wondering, do we have a goal as to how many students we're trying to target year after year? And if so, how are we doing with that goal?
So I can, our counselors, as they meet with students and do that four-year planning, is when they start to talk about college and career pathway interests and the power of fifteen. And one of the things that we've been watching closely over the years is even how many students fell just a little bit short. So I can tell you, if seven percent more of our students would have taken that one more class, we would have been at fifteen early college credits for an additional forty, it would have been forty-one percent of students. So as we go on, keep going on to the next years, a lot of that happens during that time. And it's building awareness to the students of both which courses are within a pathway and offer early college credit, and then which ones are also in our areas that are part of the general education core curriculum that can be applied to any degree or certificate. So we're excited, too, that the student readiness plan helps with this, the advising by the counselors, as well as as we are increasing dual-credit opportunities across all the schools, this is becoming very common language with our teachers, the students, and families as well.
And I would think the parents want to be involved in that, too. And my only other question, again, surrounding the power of fifteen and the fifteen-credit hours, is I was wondering if we might be able to be shared, it doesn't have to be here tonight, but maybe we can be sent demographic breakdown of the students in the graduating class of 2020 that have earned at least fifteen early college credits by the same demographics that were presented in the other information we received tonight. I really want to dive into this demographic information because I think just some of the things we've heard tonight from our community and some of the things that are going on right now in society... right now in, in society, that for us to be able to analyze that information and be reactive and perhaps proactive going forward with how best to address those types of demographic differences is something we can do as a district.
I fully agree, and I just wanna draw your attention, in the Board docs, there is a report that accompanies the presentation, and that information is on Page 14 of the report for you.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, Ms. Cavill asked a lot of the questions I was gonna ask. However, the one thing that concerns me at this point, I guess, in terms of when they talk about the first two years, that we're gonna reach the potential of students dropping out. What do we do to identify those students? And then what else do we do besides, you know, to get them involved? Do we also make any attempts to contact parents to see, to try to get them involved in the student's education?
Absolutely. One of the things that we enjoy is a positive transition experience in working closely with our middle schools to make sure that we have a good comprehensive understanding of, you know, students' needs as they're coming our way, both academically, socially, emotionally, so that students have a smooth transition to high school. About 550 students start their first day of school today at Connet High School, albeit remotely. But, you know, that connection is very, very important, and then really just making sure that it is what we described as a multi-tiered system of supports, which would include working directly with the parent and connecting with that student right away, and getting that student connected to the larger schoolhouse.
So we're, we're gathering information from District 15 and 54, then, as these students are in junior high? Because I knew that was what it was done before.
Yes, and it's both, you know, the testing information, those kind of things, but also just making sure our student services directors do a phenomenal job of, you know, connecting and finding out about sort of tiered interventions and supports that are already in place for students to help facilitate a positive transition.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank our, our young people who came and spoke before us. I, I do appreciate that. I would say I was a little disheartened when they all left the auditorium, but I am glad to see that three young ladies did, did return. And, and I hope that you gained some insight into the presentation, so thank you for, for staying for that. I think it's, it's important to understand that this has been part of our strategic plan, and I truly appreciate the staff working on this, especially the, the advanced placement. And I know we've had presentations previously, and each school has done something different to keep encouraging more students to participate in advanced placement, and I think that that's tremendous. And I think we have to keep working at it because it's important for all of our students, because we don't wanna leave someone behind. And one of the things that, that happens, you know, generally in life, whether it's in the school, whether it's employment, whether it's in an organization you belong to, people have different experiences. And we need to, to, to connect and have somebody that cares about us. And I know that's been one of the goals that we've, we've been working on for our students, so I think that that's, that's really important. And I, I do commend the administration and the staff for working on these things. Can we do more? Yes, we can. And maybe part of that is our student groups that we have at the school, the principals' advisory groups, the parent advisory groups, you know, having some, some more input and getting some more ideas and thoughts in regards to it. So again, I, I thank you, I think a lot of questions have been answered, and I, I think this is good information. I think it's important that we continue to be made aware of what's happening in, in the district to help us give better direction to, to our superintendent as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, it's, it's very informative, especially the report. The only question I, I really have, as I've, I've watched this whole presentation, is I, I see we have goals for participation in an advanced placement, and then we're looking at improving performance levels. What, what's our performance level benchmark? I, I note there's something in here for 2017, and comparing a percentage with scores of three, four, or five for Black and Hispanic students, in addition with, with getting 70% to score higher. But I'm, I'm not really sure where we're starting as far as a performance level with AP courses. I mean, we can increase participation, and we could have 100% participation, but if our performance is 80% scoring a two, it really doesn't provide an advantage to the students. So I'm trying to evaluate how this AP performance and participation tied in.
Sure, so the, when we talked about the slide with the, being on the distinguished district AP honor roll, one of the specifications to be on that is that students score, the 70% of students score a three, four, or five, so the passing. So we've maintained above the 70% rate for the last five years, as far as the success piece, in addition to also increasing the enrollment of all students, and increasing the enrollment of all the demographic groups. So we've increased the enrollment, we have more students taking them, and we've still maintained the high percentage of passing.
And then we have that breakdown based on demographics somewhere for percentage scoring three or higher. I know it was a goal there to increase, but I didn't see the breakout for that.
Which, are we, are you talking about a specific goal in?
Well, I'm trying to determine if the 70% is across all students as a total, or if it's 70% per each demographic as defined that we had. Is it 70% ECD Hispanic, Black, White? Or is it 40% ECD with an average on Black students that may equalize that out?
Sure, so on that particular piece, the College Board defines it as 70% of all, of the all group.
Are we tracking the AP per demographics the same as we are with the other elements?
Yes.
We do, we don't set that forth as a goal in this presentation, and maybe one of the principals can speak to the part of first timers coming into an AP class embracing the rigorous coursework versus shooting for one score on one day in one test.
In our, our first-time AP committee actually has sections in E319, which is AP Language and Conversation for English, and also in AP Psychology. And there are subgroups of our first-time AP students, many of which are Hispanic or African-American, and we track their progress. This year, I don't know the exact number, they're well, well within range of scoring very similarly to the other courses, the other classes that not, that did not have the cohort of these first-time AP students.
There you go. Part of it is, is the muffled speech through the, through the face mask. I, I didn't quite understand the, the explanation for the, for the decrease, other than I heard it was something to do with, with how the ISB scores the, the model, and there, there were some other things in there, too. If you could briefly go over that, please.
Sure. The first one is, the data that you see here is based on a two-year cycle of testing. So the student has to take the test simultaneously, two years in a row. And so they have to be enrolled in our school, and they have to be in attendance for two years straight and both take them. So for instance, if we have a student that is absent or sick in the 2018 school year, and takes it in the 2019 school year, and does really, really well, their score is still gonna count for zero, because they don't have, they didn't take it both years. Simultaneously, if somebody took one last year and not this year, their score is also going to be a zero. So that's gonna bring the total aggregate down. And so attendance rate is one of the pieces on the test, or being with us for both years to take it. The second factor is that the growth trajectory of an EL learner is not linear. And so what you see is, you see much more growth in the early years of being identified and classified as an EL student, as you do in the later years. And over one-third of our students have been classified more than seven years. So they're in that later growth trajectory part, where we're, statistically, you just don't see as much growth. The third is, the growth, the targets that they have to meet as a freshman or a sophomore are across-the-board targets. And so, for example, if I'm an EL student that started in EL Services in sixth grade, and I've received four years of services, and four years of growth, my target is exactly the same thing as if I'm an EL student that moved into the country a month before the test.
Complicated, thank you. I, I have a follow-up question. Mrs. Schumacher, thank you very much for your familiarity with the 20-page report, it's much better than mine. On Page 14, which I did immediately go to when you referenced it, it does give the demographic breakdown for the, the Power of 15. Thank you for showing that. One thing I'd like to inquire about is the significant gap when it comes to Black students, not only with the target that they have, but also comparative to the other demographic groups. Not sure if there's something in particular that we can do to try to address that with those students, with those families. I don't know if it's communication, I don't know if it's encouragement, I don't know if it's examples. I don't know what, if anything, we can do across the board to help those students do better in that particular area.
Absolutely. And we are, the targets, your first question, the targets were based on the initial, when the goal cycle started, on the initial data. And so that's why they were different, because they were based on where the starting point was. For the second, yes, we are trying and working all of those things. And I would say that the most effective piece that we found for not only this subgroup that you're mentioning, but all the subgroups, is the concept of the trusted adult, and making sure that from day one, a freshman year, we are forming the relationship, and the student is, is able to identify one single person, or two single people, that they consider their trusted adult. And then we utilize that relationship to have the conversations about increased success, about accelerating to the next level of coursework, about building the confidence that students can do that, and that, you know, some of the, there's many barriers, as you can imagine, but that's the starting point. And then from there, we do have systematic programs that academically support and provide what I'm gonna call differentiated support, based on where a student is at, and then also the community partnership and the family partnership is something that we are always working to increase, and we do need to increase that.
Thank you, and maybe that's something that the Equity Project can, can look at as a, a goal and an effort as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
Go move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. That brings us to special reports. We have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions here? That will bring us to our 2020-2021 school year update. Any questions here?
If, if you may, I'd like to give a summary of some of the information we received today, as well as some of the information we received yesterday from the Illinois Department of Public Health. The first day of school's always an exciting time. Students are thinking, "What is my teacher like? Will I like the class? Who's gonna be in my class? What is a Zoom meeting?" Teachers are thinking similar items. "What is a Zoom meeting gonna look like within my classroom? Will I be able to connect with my kids? Who's missing? Why are they missing?" I will tell you, the day unfolded in a very positive manner. We had 93% attendance throughout the day, which is an amazing attendance rate for the first day of school. Students are expected to participate in each class for 60 minutes. Attendance is taken near the beginning of the period, and then again near the end of the period, to ensure that they stay online during that time. Homework is also expected, maybe not today as much, but there certainly will be homework coming in the future days. Just as it's traditional, on any first day of school, we had some students who were late, we had some students who got lost and couldn't find their Zoom links, we had some students who needed a remote intervention from our disciplinary team. So even though the environment was different, we still experienced some of our same problems that we had within our students, whether they were in person or not. Our support teams at each school began working immediately during Period 1, reaching out to families to find solutions for getting their child back into class. Should technology access be a challenge for our families, District 211, through a variety of grant programs, provides hotspots to families in need of a Wi-Fi. We also began our food pickup for our families yesterday, and will now continue that steadily throughout the school year. Though some of our teachers were teaching from home because of leaves, many were on the school grounds to have access to our District 211 network, our classroom and lab materials, and reaching out through their classes via Zoom through those situations. After lunch, there's a 90-minute period of academic support. These department and class-based systems will begin on August 24th. Teachers will post on their school logi site which academic supports are appropriate for their class. Examples of academic supports are remote tutoring rooms, accelerating topics within particular classes, lab connections, writing supports, and even workouts. Tomorrow, we'll bring a new set of classes and a new set of teachers for our students to meet. In the world of athletics, our boys and girls golf and cross-country teams are active along with our girls tennis and our girls swimming and diving. These fall sports are running under the IHSA and IDPH guidelines, with limitations including social distancing, mask-wearing when possible, and competition restrictions. The other traditional fall sports have been moved with a hope of competing from February to April. Traditional winter sports will be held, if possible, from November to February. Spring sports have a May-through-June season. The IHSA is calling these plans fluid, as changes may occur throughout the school year. The Illinois Department of Public Health works in partnership with the IHSA for the development of these plans. Each one of our schools over, offers over 50 activities. These afternoon activities will begin near the end of August, and include some creative and remote engagements, as well as awaiting possible in-person connections. Beginning at the end of August and into September, we'll begin a roll-in of our small groups of students as prioritized by the Illinois State Board of Education, and still following the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines. With a successful addition of small groups of students during academic support, including our at-risk students, specific students with individualized education plans, English language learners, and lab-based career and technical education classes, we can continue to increase the number of students in our school. These plans can change, like all plans during these times can change. These in-person opportunities will be made, be made available to families, but they are not required. Here are the factors involved in both an opening to in-person instruction and movement back to remote instruction. As a public high school district, the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health set the minimum education and safety standards for the district. Key components for these standards include: Phase 4 revitalization of a region, schools are open with IDPH-approved safety, safety guidelines. IDPH metrics are used to determine the declining health of Region 10 in regard to the spread of the virus. This includes a sustained increase in the seven-day rolling average in the positivity rate, and either a sustained seven-day increase in hospital admissions, or reduction in hospital capacity, including ICU capacity or medical surgical beds less than 20%. A separate indicator of declining health in the region is three consecutive days averaging an 8% positivity rate or higher. The IDPH metrics, which are also on the Board docs, can be found at www.dph.illinois.gov/RegionalMetrix. Prior to July 22nd, when the potential hybrid scenario was announced, there was a three-day rolling average increase in the positivity rate, and a one-day rolling average increase in the hospital admissions. Prior to the August 3rd communication to remote start, there was an eight-day rolling average increase in the positivity rate, and a five-day rolling average increase in hospital admissions. The data is published on the IDPH website, and it is four days after the date in question. IDPH and the ISBE require symptom screening and temperature checks for entering all of our schools. We are set up for this. As of yesterday- As of yesterday, at 4:00 PM, the Illinois Department of Public Health released its latest information for schools, including: Any person exhibiting a COVID-19 symptom of fever, chills, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting and/or diarrhea must complete a 10 calendar-day isolation from the date of the first symptom, be fever-free for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication, and be free of any other symptoms before returning to school. A doctor's note for an alternative diagnosis or a negative COVID-19 test could allow a quicker return to school. If a student is sent home with suspected COVID-19 symptoms, any siblings are also quarantined for 14 days or until an alternative diagnosis is made or a negative result is received. Contact tracing includes identifying the people who have confirmed or probable case of COVID-19 and the people with close contact. Close contact includes any person within six feet of a confirmed case with or without a mask for at least 15 minutes throughout the day. Close contacts of confirmed COVID cases are quarantined for 14 days. Two confirmed cases of a COVID-19 occurring within 14 calendar days of each other with individuals in the same classroom would meet the definition of an outbreak. The investigation by the Illinois Department of Public Health may result in recommendations for testing and quarantining all students and staff in the infected classroom. A positive case of COVID-19 in a school would result in contact tracing of individuals within six feet for 15 minutes and notification of all involved. Names are not shared in the notification letter. Key components of the IDPH guidance include limiting any space to 50 people or fewer, physical distancing at the IDPH standard of six feet to the greatest extent possible, wearing masks, disinfecting procedures, and cleanliness. Each high school has approximately 150 classrooms, which are used every period. Class sizes can be as high as 32 students in a room. At a 50% capacity, not all desks are six feet apart within our rooms. These are just a few requirements of the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. It does not mean we cannot open, but it does indicate a controlled opening with small groups of students remaining six feet apart and moving towards larger numbers to ensure that students and teachers of various-sized classes and classrooms can remain six feet apart. By following this guideline, our students and staffs are unlikely to be quarantined. Though both students and staff can connect remotely during a quarantine, a substitute must be in the classroom if students are present. Though the school year is not as anyone would have expected, predicted, or wanted, the District 211 staff is diligently working to ensure a greater curricular and extracurricular experience for our students. The curriculum is prioritized to ensure the core concepts of each course, which prepare students for the following year. Principals are creatively designing ways to celebrate and engage in traditional school events in safe and fun ways. Preparing a school to open, either in a remote or hybrid environment, requires every system of the school to be assessed and changed to meet the schedule and safety guidelines. Though systems within a school are frequently changed, never in our history have we changed so many systems at once. For example, the following areas were modified to keep opportunities available to our level of expectation for our students: Scheduling, athletics activities, cafeteria space, media space, classroom seating, cleaning and disinfecting protocols, employee workspaces, symptom checking, temperature screening, quarantine procedures, sick rooms, hallway traffic flow, bus loading and unloading, food pickup, lunch and breakfast eating areas, employee leave options, passing period protocols, lab disinfecting, attendance changing, issuing supplies and textbooks, students with unique needs, curriculum prioritization, ventilation and filter assessments, dual-credit connections, advanced placement testing, instructional choices, SAT preparation, homeroom, freshman orientation, school events, open house, budgeting, lab classes, electronic assessments, technology access, Zoom connections, schoolagie communications, the list goes on and on. There is a team of staff members behind each change, each implementation, and each protocol. As difficult as the shifting of our educational work and personal world can be, the District 211 employees are the ones who are making these changes in an environment where rules can change on a moment's notice. This is our new norm. It is work that is done for the benefits of our students. I want to acknowledge the work of the principals, every one of their staff members, including the 20 new administrators you worked tonight, who are all in new positions, along with the staff members of the administration office, all they have done to prepare these two schedules. The scenarios you saw in July are not just ideas in paper, they're plans ready to implement. And this could not be done without the dedication of each and every staff member within our district. We do not know what the next 10 months will hold, and that is unsettling for each and every one of us. But we do know, whatever is presented to us as a change, a challenge, or an opportunity, we will turn it into an experience that will help our students move forward in their education. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
I have a question for Dr. Smo. What are we doing about the students that are getting the free breakfast and lunches at this point?
We had our first pickup yesterday, and we will start delivering next week.
Okay. So, are we going to deliver it to the students?
A week's worth.
A week's worth.
I also had a few questions. Thank you for all of your work. I can't imagine you've gotten much sleep for a very long time, so I appreciate that. I did wonder if you could talk a little bit about the flexibility. So, you mentioned one of the many systems that had to change on a dime was leave for staff. And so, I wanted to know if you could tell us a little bit about the flexibility that the district's offering to staff members who are in as much of a difficult position as working parents, who are parents of our own students.
So, we have, there are a variety of leaves that are available for parents with concerns over childcare. Some of them are federal leaves, some of them are flexibility within their workday to work small portions from home. Some of them are leaves where they do not take a cut in pay, and some of them are leaves where they have two-thirds of a cut in pay. So, each individual has the opportunity to speak with our Human Resources and has information in terms of what is the best situation for them. We are trying to see what we can do with our local park districts. They are ready and willing to help us provide opportunities of childcare for our employees. They need a space. And when we start to open our doors, every space of our schools are used. So, that becomes the challenge that we're trying to work through right now.
Of course. It's a big one, because, you know, my overall concern, and it's nothing that a single school district can solve, you know, it's just a horrible situation for everybody. And I'm concerned that this confluence of factors that are largely beyond our control kind of end up with a result of knocking, you know, a not insignificant number of qualified teachers, not just in our district, but in all districts, disproportionately the female working moms out of the workforce. And teacher shortage is already an issue, and like every other fault line, you know, this pandemic, I'm sure, will just expand a tenfold. So, it's a worry mind, and I'm really, really glad and proud to hear that the administration's been trying to work with staff individually to make sure that we minimize any sort of effects to that, the result of this situation. So, thank you.
I have a comment I'd like to take a few minutes of time to say. While this is a very challenging time in our world and country, it is certainly such a time in our community. I completely understand, sympathize, and empathize with members of our community regarding the difficulties associated with online and remote learning. My daughter is experiencing it firsthand as a college student, where they're beginning their school year both in-person and online. And my wife is experiencing it firsthand as an educator in District 54, where they are also beginning their school year with all students learning remotely. From the lack of social, emotional, and interactive aspects, potential distractions, home environments, technical challenges, safety concerns, classroom management differences, nutritional questions, curriculum style and comprehension, parental employment conflicts, and other aspects of remote learning, however, the safety and wellness of our students, staff, administrators, families, and other community members comes first. If the health and well-being of our community is at risk by having students and teachers attend school together and in-person due to this pandemic, we need to wait until the scientific and medical professionals tell us it is safe to do so, and until then, use alternative methods of educating our children the best we can. We do not live in a perfect world. Nine months ago, nobody was encouraging educators to prepare for a worldwide pandemic. Last spring, we were thrown into a very difficult situation where our professionals had to quickly change course and teach differently than most had ever done or been prepared for. Since then, we've had several months to prepare for alternatives, including revised in-person protocols, hybrid methods, and fully remote teaching. Fortunately, our district has had many tools and resources available to our students and teachers to support such ways of teaching and learning, from technology to educational programming. Not all districts are as fortunate. I can feel confident in saying that everyone involved, students, teachers, administrators, parents, this school board, and others across our community, want our students in school. But we must do it in a way that is safe for the entire community. More than two years ago, our Board of Education approved and adopted 11 values. Many of these values support the decisions we made to start the school year remotely. Academic rigor. Our district values engaging curriculum built upon high-quality educational experiences to develop critical thinking. That's why our administrators, along with several teachers, have worked hard to make sure their courses can be taught in-person or online. Accountability and communication. Our district values the charge of providing thorough and accurate information with all shared stakeholders. This includes regular communication on what's happening when decisions are made. It also includes the opportunity for an open exchange and dialogue of information and perspectives. Not only has the district communicated out, but we have received communication from the community and staff. Efficiency and innovation. Our district values systemic measures and practices to optimize the community's resources throughout the organization, including technology and methods. This includes continuous improvement to advance educational and operational practices and the possible need to change how we do things. Opportunity. Our district, not too much more, sorry. Opportunity. Our district values fostering a comprehensive array of enrichment experiences to support all aspects of student development. Our teachers, administrators, and staff are working hard to find ways for our students to get the most successful and enriching experiences as possible, even under the current circumstances. Safety and wellness. Our district values safeguarding the welfare of all by providing a positive and respectful environment. We value cultivating the healthy, physical, social, and emotional well-being of all. Our staff and administrators are amazing people. Their concerns for our students, teaching, and their own well-being must be met with appreciation, support, and guidance as we move forward as a community. We are all in this together, and we need to remember how that works, by us all joining along the same priorities and using the resources we have as best we can.
May I say something, please? I was there today at all the schools, and I appreciate how hard the staff has worked. But I got to tell you, reading this is very disturbing. The state has set expectations so impossible to meet, I don't ever see in the foreseeable future us going to even a hybrid plan. Someone shows up with a headache, and you could send 50 or 60 people home. I don't know what to say. It's an impossible.
If I can clarify that. If someone has a symptom, and I have to preface everything, is we go by current guidance, because guidance changes. The current guidance would include concern over people with close contact. Close contact means they're within six feet for a total of 15 minutes. That is the key. In our buildings, we have so many different-sized classrooms, different number of kids. The key is making sure that they're six feet apart when they're sitting in a class together for 60 minutes.
I agree. I saw it. I agree.
I don't think it's impossible.
But these standards that are set by the state are draconian.
Thank you. Next item is our parent open house date. If there are no questions here, we will move on to unfinished business. First item we have is a resolution directing the inter-fund transfers for life safety projects. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution authorizing the permanent inter-fund transfer of $1,511,361 from the Life Safety Fund to its operations and maintenance fund. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have a proposed policy revision graduation requirements. Suggested motion that the Board policy file IKF graduation requirements be revised as proposed and included in the Board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have proposed policy revision promotion. Suggested motion is that the Board policy file IKC promotion be revised as proposed and included in the Board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have proposed policy revision agenda format. Suggested motion that the Board policy file BDDB agenda format be revised as proposed and included in the Board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate that I think that moving our closed sessions before we hear public comments is, I don't see the ability to allow our community to comment on things that may come before the Board as a closed session item. Additionally, as we are tonight, we're not following this order of business. I know we do, and we have a lot of closed session items, but as is illustrated by tonight's example, there isn't necessarily a benefit to having that closed session up front.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nag.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. That brings us to new business. First, we have 2020-2021 Tentative Budget. Suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 Tentative Budget as presented, and direct the superintendent to place it on file for public inspection for a minimum of 30 days. Further, that notice of a public hearing to be held at the Board of Education meeting on September 17, 2020 be published. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I believe this is the proper time to introduce a motion. I move that the district abate the $4.5 million fiscal year 2020 surplus.
Mr. Kramer, a motion at this point is out of order. The motion before the Board is the one that I've just read. The motion before the board is the one that I've just read.
When can I make the motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything that you just said.
When can I make the motion?
After the board disposes of the motion that it's facing right now. Is there any discussion on this motion?
This is the motion to approve the tentative budget as presented?
Yes.
We do have a presentation if the board is interested.
Pardon?
We do have a presentation ready if the board is interested.
Okay, we can have a presentation?
Are we in the middle of a motion?
We are.
Okay, and the motion is to approve the budget prior to the presentation? Because as you read it, it was to approve the budget and post it. Is that correct?
We were at the discussion point.
Okay, but, okay, so immediately after the discussion, we'll have a vote, correct?
We'll have a presentation.
Presentation within the motion?
We always do it that way.
Presentation within the discussion portion of the motion to help us with our decision of vote at the end of this session.
Okay, usually we have the presentation earlier than followed by the motion, so.
It is different for this particular meeting because it couples with the academic presentation, and that presentation belonged for a good reason. Is the reason we separate these two out.
Okay.
But it is different, it's correct.
And I was just, yeah, and there's no presentation identified in the budget as far as I can, or not within the agenda, I guess. The presentation isn't defined, so just clarifying that. Okay. So we can proceed with the presentation and hold discussion until after the presentation? Do you want to start discussion before the presentation, Mr. Chair?
Makes no difference to me. Just so we get it all done before we vote?
I withhold comments until presentation's concluded.
Go ahead with the presentation.
Tonight, Chief Operating Officer Lauren Hummel and Controller and Treasurer Barb Peterson will present the tentative budget for the 2020-21 school year. We are in month seven, or I'm sorry, month six of a seven-month process that began in March. Each portion of the budget is presented twice to the board via the Budget and Finance Committee meeting as well as board meetings. Tonight is the second review of our Operations and Maintenance Fund, Education Fund, and the budget as a whole. Operating this budget has been challenging in our fluid environment of the upcoming school year, and Ms. Hummel and Ms. Peterson will review those challenges as well as our budget projections.
Thank you very much. We are pleased to present you information on the 2021 tentative budget this evening, beginning with information on the recap of our prior fiscal year, and then moving into the Educational and Operations and Maintenance Fund, followed by the tentative budget as a whole. As Dr. Small said, this has been one of our most challenging budgets to prepare given the unknowns pertaining to the upcoming school year. We have continued to make decisions each day with the best information that we've had available to us, and the budget development process was no different. With that, we are pleased to share with you the tentative budget plan that has been developed, which includes prioritization of our resources toward the education and safety of our students. Before we review the fiscal year 21 tentative budget details, we'd like to begin with a recap of our ending financial position from last fiscal year. The 2019-2020 school year was the first time in history that our school buildings were closed for the last quarter of the year. The positive ending budget variance in both revenue and expenditures. We spent less on salaries, benefits, utilities, our supplies and purchase services, as well as our capital outlay. We tracked very close to budget plan prior to the closure in the last quarter of the year. At the July meeting, the board received financial reports that summarized our year-end budget position for the fiscal year 20... For all funds combined, the district ended the year ahead of budget plan by $4.5 million with a total budget surplus of $8.4 million. Again, this surplus is due to less-than-budgeted expenses in almost every category, primarily due to the closure of our schools. We've discussed the planned use of our budget surplus and have aligned the use of the surplus with the priorities that are in the strategic plan as well as designated a portion of them through board action. The surplus that is the result of last year will be used to pay for carryover expenses and our capital projects that were delayed as a result of timing. We also have new capital projects that are paid exclusively through our annual budget, at which a portion of this surplus will be utilized. Each year, we do account for a combination of budget reserves and surplus to pay for major facility improvement projects and have $9.5 million in projects planned in the tentative budget. And finally, the board took action to waive student registration fees, student parking fees, and reduced-price meal fees, and will utilize a portion of our budget surplus to offset this lost revenue totaling about $1.5 million.
The Educational Fund is the largest of our accounting funds, representing over 75% of both our revenues and expenditures for next year. It represents the cost of instruction and instructional support services, athletics and activities, technology, food services, administration, and tuitions for students placed at other local educational agencies. Our largest revenue source in the Educational Fund is local property taxes, which account for 85% of the revenue in this fund. This year's tax revenue is based upon the 2019 levy, which was calculated at a CPI of 1.9% and a TIF roll-on of 0.8%. Offsetting this increase is a drop in property tax collections that we are predicting due to the pandemic. Normally, we would expect to receive about 99% of the current-year levy, but due to the economic hardship inflicted on many due to COVID, we have reduced that collection rate to 97% for the next year. We're budgeting $3 million in corporate personal property taxes across all funds next year, down about 15% from the prior year. State and federal aid is expected to remain fairly consistent next year, but some of the pieces are expected to change significantly. Food service sales are expected to decrease due to lower student presence in the buildings. Fees and other has several components to it, all which are budgeted less than the prior year, starting with the instructional fees, which were waived for 2021 for $1.3 million. Also of note are that last year we sold two building trade homes, and we received a significant TIF distribution from the Village of Palatine, neither which will repeat next year. On the expenditure side, salaries are the biggest piece and represent increases per the collective bargaining agreements. We have budgeted a full year of expense for our all athletic and activity stipends and hourly staff such as student supervisors and cafeteria workers. Benefits is projected to increase significantly. The largest piece of this is healthcare costs, which we are projected to increase 6% next year on the advice of our healthcare consultants. For the first two months of the year, the cross-bouchio build has been flat with the prior year, so we are hoping that this trend continues. Purchase services are budgeted to increase about $1 million next year. A large portion of this is related to technology, where we have hit a year where we will renew several support agreements that are for multiple years. Hence, our costs increase just due to where we are in this renewal cycle. Also, last year's purchase services numbers were lower than anticipated due to the school building closure. As an example, we did not lease space for graduation last year, and we had no expense in the fourth quarter for our sports officials. Non-capitalized equipment is budgeted $2.4 million decrease from the prior year. Last year, we were actually over-budgeting this category as we accelerated the purchase of many replacement laptops and desktops at the end of the year due to expected long lead times caused by the pandemic. Tuition expenses, the cost of placing District 211 students at other local educational agencies, which can better serve their unique needs. For next year, we will have more out-placed students than the year before. Overall, we're budgeting a 3.1% increase in expenditures over the prior year in the Education Fund. Keep in mind that the prior year numbers are lower than originally forecast, which inflates that percentage increase. Technology is an increasingly important part of our daily lives, and in this pandemic, we have come to rely on it as never before. The world of technology changes quickly, bringing new challenges on a regular basis. I've already talked a bit about the technology increases as it relates to purchase services and also the decrease as it relates to non-capitalized equipment. This year's technology budget will also include some costs that we plan to get reimbursed for under the CARES Act, such as new e-learning software, a new software called SignUp Genius for scheduling meetings and lab time for the students, the symptom check software that is required for everyone to complete before you enter our buildings each day, and mobile MiFi devices for students without internet service, just to name a few of these items that we hope to get reimbursed for under the CARES Act.
The Operations and Maintenance Fund accounts for the repair and maintenance of our facilities and site maintenance projects. In March, we began to review information on our anticipated capital project expenditures, including discussion on budgeting all facility improvement projects. This section will continue that review as well as provide the remaining details of the tentative budget for the Operations and Maintenance Fund. Budgeted revenue for the Operations and Maintenance Fund has a 0.4% increase over what was received last fiscal year. The primary source of increase is related to property taxes. Investment earnings are reduced by almost one-half of the earnings last year due to reductions in investment rates. Rental of facilities includes both our cell tower lease revenue as well as our facility rentals. For the coming year, we anticipate receiving full revenue from the cell tower lease agreements, but greatly reduced revenue from our facility rentals. We've accounted primarily for carryover payments due from last year's rentals in the tentative budget. Changes in fee revenue include waiver of student parking fees and increases in E-rate funding used to reimburse us for a portion of our telecommunications services. Operations and Maintenance Fund expenditures for the fiscal year 21 budget are coming, excuse me, are increasing by 61% over the prior year. And before a sense of panic sets in with a 61% increase, I want to remind you that this is inclusive of a reallocation of both our capital project expenses as well as our life safety expenses into this fund for the first time this year. Salary and benefit costs for our operations and maintenance staff include a full year of staffing and planned increases in benefit costs related to our anticipated trends predicted by our insurance consultants. Increases in purchase services include costs for design and engineering fees, repair and maintenance costs, and equipment rental needed throughout the year. Insurance costs include workers' compensation, our unemployment and liability insurance, and remain fairly consistent with last year's costs. Of the increase in supplies and materials, almost all is attributed to the cost of PPE and other cleaning and disinfectant supplies necessary for a safe environment for students and staff in the COVID pandemic. Utility costs are planned to decrease even after accounting for three months of building closures last spring. The savings is attributed to record-low rates that we were able to lock in through our utility provider. Non-capitalized equipment increases include items such as our thermal scanning systems used to detect elevated temperatures that people were not entering our schools, and also other replacement tools and equipment needed in our buildings. Historically, the district has accounted for major facility projects in one of three categories. Those approved on the Life Safety Survey are major capital improvement projects, such as our bathroom and locker room renovations, and routine capital outlay, including paving work and security improvements. We've historically accounted for these projects in different accounting funds because of our funding sources. Absent debt and because all of our projects are funded through our annual budget, all projects are now budgeted in the Operations and Maintenance Fund with the detail provided by category for clarity and transparency. Transfers of remaining fund balance from the Life Safety Budget were completed tonight, and capital projects, fund, budget transfers are included in the tentative budget. The first category of capital outlay accounts for the routine maintenance projects. These are projects that are typically smaller in scale or routine maintenance and improvement projects throughout our buildings. For fiscal year 21, four million of these projects are planned. The list of planned projects is here for your review and includes both carryover costs for projects that are completed this summer, such as our Conant-Chiller equipment replacement, security improvements to our vestibules and paving repairs, and it also includes projects that are planned for the upcoming year, including equipment replacement, marquee replacement, or masonry repairs. The second category of capital outlay is that of our major capital projects. This summer, we are completing renovations to the Fromm High School locker rooms, the Conant High School stadium turf replacement and track resurfacing, and our Conant outdoor fields. While next year, we plan to phase-in restroom renovations at both Palatine High School and Fromm High School. The total cost allocated in the budget includes $8.25 million in carryover costs from the current year and another $1 million in costs for summer 2021 projects. The third and final set of capital outlay in the Operations and Maintenance Fund is attributed to completion of life safety projects. Similar to the major capital project list, the fiscal year 21 budget has costs that are included for the final payments on the projects that are being completed or have been completed this summer, as well as the initial cost for summer 2021 projects. The majority of our life safety improvements taking place this year were at Schaumburg High School this summer. Well, they will shift to a heavier focus at both Palatine and Conant High Schools next summer. Proceeds from the district's 62-acre site are included in the tentative budget. Following closing of the sale on this property, the proceeds of $17.7 million will be received and accounted for in our Operations and Maintenance Fund. There is no planned use of proceeds, which is included in this budget, and the board will have an opportunity to discuss that matter at a future meeting. Just last night, the Village of Schaumburg zoning board approved the zoning ferience for the site, and the village board will be the final level of review prior to a vote for approval for the development plans, which could be scheduled as early as the end of this month.
Now that we have reviewed all of the individual fund budgets, we'll put them together to review the combined 2021 budget. Listed for your review is a recap of our budget development sequence. Our plan was to show you each fund budget twice. Our plan was to show you each fund budget twice. Tonight, the board must take action to approve a tentative budget and put it on display for 30 days prior to approving the budget at the September meeting. Our framework for budget development should not be a surprise to you: funding instructional programs and strategic priorities, operation, operating within the limits of the tax cap, remaining debt-free, continuing our one-to-one program, and optimizing our assets. What is different about this year's budget is that we are operating in the middle of a pandemic. Therefore, the budget must also reflect the unique revenues and expenditures relating to operating a high school district in this environment, where decisions may or may not be in our control. Part of our federal revenue budget is $1.1 million in CARES Act funding to provide relief for expenses related to the COVID-19 outbreak. This money can be used to address the needs of our low-income student population, purchase PPE, technology for online learning, mental health supports, and more. We plan to spend this grant money across multiple funds, the biggest piece on PPE, which includes hand sanitizer, face masks and shields, gloves and gowns. Over $500,000 was or will be spent on additional instructional supports to engage students for incomplete remediation and summer programs to reengage and reconnect students, as presented to you by Mr. Schumacher and Mr. Kovak at our last board meeting. Funds in this category will be used, also be used for staff training on remote and blended learning. Each of our high schools will have two entrances equipped with thermo-imaging devices to quickly assess body temperatures, allowing students and faculty to enter our facilities efficiently and safely. These devices, already purchased and installed, will be covered under the CARES Act. The grant will also cover hotspot internet access for qualified students and some additional hardware and software necessary to give students an improved remote learning experience. This grant will not cover all of our COVID-related costs. However, we do have additional Title I grant funds available next year, and we hope that we will be able to recoup all of our COVID-related expenditures. Overall, we are budgeting expenditures of $262 million and expenses of $270 million for next year, giving us a budget deficit of $8 million for the year. Seeing this deficit number is a little alarming, so I want to unpack that a bit. In other years, we've had a planned deficit due to capital spending, but this is not a planned deficit. Let's start by looking at the $8 million surplus from last year. Last year was unusual, with school being closed for the fourth quarter, so we had some expenditures that we avoided and some expenditures that were delayed and shifted into this year. The number that has shifted is difficult to quantify, but it is definitely impacting this year's budget. Next, we will have the impact of our waived fees, which reduced our revenue by $1.5 million for this year. And finally, and most significantly, our assumption that we have a lower property tax collects rate, collection rate this fall, due to the economic hardships of the pandemic on the community. This reduced our revenue by $5 million. So if this would have been a regular school year, I think this budget would have been close to break even. The good news is, we have the reserves to cover a one-year, $8 million deficit, and despite the budgeted loss, we are predicting an increase in our reserves next year due to the sale of the land this fall. Overall, our fund balance is projected to increase $9 million next year. An important part in understanding the budget is understanding how this single year fits into the bigger picture. We have therefore updated the five-year financial forecast to include this year's budget. Many of the assumptions that we reviewed earlier tonight for the 2021 budget do not carry forward into future years. For example, we expect property tax collection rates to return to pre-pandemic levels after this year. Although we are still predicting budget deficits in the future years, they are at much lower levels. The deficit for 2023 is a planned deficit caused by the spending of $7 million of the proceeds from the sale of the land. This model assumes CPI for this current year to be zero, but if that ends higher, these deficits will more likely be break-even situations. As you can see, our fund balance percentages are projected to decline, but will remain above our policy level of 33% for each of the next five years. With the discontinued use of the capital projects, life safety, and debt service funds, our operating fund balance is now equal to our total fund balance. We must adopt and file our budget by September 30th. Our next step in the process will be to approve a tentative budget here tonight at the board meeting and place this budget on public display for 30 days. At the September 17th board meeting, we will hold a public hearing on the budget and adopt the final budget, which will be the same as the tentative budget approved here tonight. We're happy to answer any questions you have this evening.
Start questions, this time on this side. Questions?
Yeah, I, you're making me work for this one. I'm, I'm gonna, I move to amend this motion by including an abatement of $4.5 million, which is a portion of the 2020 surplus.
Why don't, repeat that for us all?
Okay, the, the motion, okay, there's, there's a motion. I want to amend the motion by including an abatement of $4.5 million, which is a portion
Okay, so we have a proposed amendment to the motion. That proposed amendment would be to include an abatement of $4.5 million, which is a portion of the 2020 surplus. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Does someone want to second that?
I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion on the amendment.
I move to amend the amendment.
You need to amend the amendment, okay.
By the Board of Education directing the administration to provide a plan, including abatement with respect to the anticipated $17.7 million proceeds from the sale of the 62 acres of land to be, to be presented at the October Budget and Finance Committee and to be voted on at the October Board of Education meeting.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow you to do that.
Point of order. I can, I can, I can make, I could move to make an amendment to the amendment.
Your amendment does, does not have anything to do, I don't believe.
Hang, hang on a second, just hang on a second. We, we can address the second thing that you want outside of just dealing with the First Amendment. We're dealing with an amendment, the second thing you talked about has nothing to do with the amendment. So let's have the board act on the First Amendment that you have proposed, which I repeated, and which is in front of us for discussion.
As long as you'll allow me to make the second motion.
You can make as many motions as you like. Right now, before the board, is this one amendment. That is what's up for discussion. Any discussion on this amendment.
Yes. So it's my understanding from the information we just received that 2020, 2021 revenue is expected to be about $5 million below the 2019, 2020 revenue. Is that correct?
This is a deficit budget of about $8 million.
And then taking into consideration increased expenditures, expected, the difference is over eight and a half million dollars. Correct? Ms. Cavill's not even, so.
Yes, we're, yes.
All right. So I really cannot see how there can be a claim that there's a straight increase in fund balance, when if we did not receive the land proceeds, we would actually have a $6 million deficit expected for this coming year, rather than a budget surplus.
Okay, that, that, my, 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 my. Hang on a second. Why don't we let Ms. Summo and/or Ms. Peterson or Dr. Small respond to Mr. Rosenbloom's remarks?
Yes, Mr. Rosenbloom, you are correct. That's, we would, we are budgeting a $8.6 million budget deficit for this year.
So going back to discussion on a, a potential abatement, based on a expected surplus, if you look at it, then there is no surplus, there's actually a $6 million deficit from which there can be no abatement, in my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I, I asked that question at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and the answer that I heard was, yes, there is a surplus of $4.5 million from the 2020 budget, predominantly due to the, the non-expenditure of budgeted funds due to COVID. So there, there is, in fact, a surplus.
Where is the surplus in the whole budget that I just listened to and I'm not seeing?
No, it, it, is there a surplus from 2020 of $4.5? It's around $8 million.
No, I saw the surplus at the beginning. I'm talking about.
Let's let, uh, Ms. Summo or Ms. Peterson or Dr. Small respond to Mr. Kramer's issue, please.
The fiscal year 2020, so last year's budget, did end with a budget surplus of $4.5 million in excess of budget plan. And the surplus has been allocated in this year's budget, which, as you can see on the slide before you hear, has a deficit. The, there's a portion, so we have allocated a portion of our reserves each year. We are allocating a portion of our, our combined reserves in our budget toward the completion of capital improvement projects that are prioritized in our strategic plan. The board took action to waive student fees in several categories totaling $1.5 million. And as Barb described, we have several carryover expenses that were a, um, a partial reason for a part of that surplus last year, and those carryover expenses did not go away, they just were delayed and they are included in this year's budget. So that is the combined use of that additional surplus that was last year, from last year's budget.
Ms. Cavill, now, do you want to?
That's exactly, that's as I understood it, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I guess I would just like to make a comment. I, I don't want to plan on that proceeds yet until we actually receive that. And as far as the tax revenues, the people that I work with through, through my office, we are getting an extremely high volume of people seeking rent assistance and people seeking mortgage assistance. So I'm really concerned about the taxes, when they're going to come in, and what effect that that's going to have on us. So those are a couple of concerns that I see, and those are real concerns that people are facing. And if they can make a choice of putting something off, I suspect they're going to do that.
And so, and so are the concerns about people being unemployed, which, the $4.5 million could go a bit of a way to help.
So I share Ms. Klimkowitz's concern about, you know, and I, I, one in three American families missed their July housing payment in some shape or another, so I'd like.
Could you, I, I'm having trouble hearing you, if you could.
One in three American families missed their July housing payment, that was consistent in Illinois as well. And so I'm wondering where, if you could tell me how you arrived at the estimation for the decrease in property taxes, like where you got that number from?
It is an estimate. We did talk to several other districts in our local area and also to our attorneys to come up with that number. We also talked to a PMA who manages our investments, just to see how that's trending. I can't tell you, we are tracking it very closely, and to date, we are about $15 million behind in our collections as of the same date as we were last year. So we have caught up a little bit this past week, which is great, we hope that that continues, but there's just a lot of unknown out there.
That's what worries me. I mean, I appreciate that this must have been really hard to put together, and there's a lot of unknowns. I just worry that the, that the actual number is going to be even worse than our projection in this budget, but we're not in a position to do anything about that, I just have a concern.
Right. Honestly, it could go either way. You're just gonna have to wait and see.
Another, real quick question regarding the CARES Act and the reimbursement. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the wording is, we might expect to receive possible reimbursement? It's not guaranteed, is that correct, for the additional expenses that we're incurring as a district to cover those things?
Correct, yes. The, the additional Title I funding that we have will only cover expenditures related to the Title I schools, which we don't have those schools in yet, because we don't.
One of our final free and reduce numbers, but typically that is Palatin, Hoffman Estates, and Academy North.
So any expenditures for those buildings would likely qualify for reimbursement.
But not the other schools?
Not the other schools. But we could possibly put more money on the CARES Act related to those schools and move, transfer more money from the CARES Act to the other schools. Juggle it a little bit.
Are we ready for the question on the amendment?
One more, one more point, slide 24, please. Okay, this clearly shows a almost level or in, well, almost level, total fund balance of, of around 44%, including the $17.7 million. So the district is not hurting. You know, there, there's a policy of a minimum of 33%, I think 45 is way too much, and I think we can give some of the money back to the taxpayers.
Mr. Kramer, I, I, I think, I think your intent is good, but again, I, I'm a little hesitant in regards to this, because we have to look at the projection going out the next couple of years, so you can see where it has decreased. And I think what we were able to do this year, as far as waiving some of the fees, maybe that's a way to help out our community maybe the following year. But there are so many variables this year that I'm not sure what we can, can definitively address. So I, I see this, but I think we really have to look, what is it going out forward the next five years?
Okay, so the question before the board now is solely on the amendment. So in response to the question which Recording Secretary is going to, to call the roll for, a response of "aye" would mean that you affirm the amendment, that you want the amendment. A response of "no" would mean that you reject the amendment. Is everyone clear on what the question is? Okay. Sally, if you please.
Mr.
Roll call, yes.
Mr. Young?
Nay.
Ms. Cavill?
Nay.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Nay.
Mr. Lefever?
No.
Did we get Ms. Klimkowitz?
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Oh my goodness, Mrs. Klimkowitz, thank you.
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the amendment fails. Now we are back to the discussion on the original motion. Is there any additional discussion on the original?
Yeah, point of order, I mean, the, the $17.7 million is part of, for the land sale, is part of the original, it's part of the budget, so therefore is part of the, of the discussion. And I'm a little confused, can I do an amendment here? Because it is, it is germane to, 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 to the, to voting yes or no on, on the tentative budget, or do I wait and make a separate motion outside of this? What, what's, what's the chair's preference?
So, hang on, I'm not understanding your question. What, what is your question? You, you gave me two motions before, immediately before this meeting. I have both of them in front of me. One, I wasn't going to allow you to make, because it's not on the agenda. Instead, you repackaged it on the fly to make it an amendment to an original motion, which I considered not unreasonable, and we didn't have to address the reason that I would have rejected it outright in the first place. We're done with that amendment. Now, your second question, which I think stands on its own, totally outside the budgetary conversation, about directing the administration to do something, which the board can direct the administration to do something, but that is without regard to the question that the board faces right now. So I, I don't think it is an appropriate amendment to the budgetary question.
Well, that, that's a vote, that, that's not your decision.
That is my ruling.
Point of order.
What is your point?
You're, you're, you're operating out on, on your own rules, not Robert's.
If you would like to appeal the decision of the chair, you are welcome to make that motion.
I appeal the decision of the chair.
Okay, we will, we'll put that question to the board. Do you understand what the question is?
No.
I want to amend the, the current motion, which is to approve, to vote on approval of, of the tentative budget, with language specific to the $17.7 million, which is part of, of the budget, budget projections, which makes it part of the budget process. All I want to know is, what are we going to do with that money? We, I think that is, I think that is germane to, to understanding what is really happening, what can happen in the future. If we want to buy curtains for $17.7 million, what does that do to the budget? If we want to, if we want to give some of that money back to the community, what does that do to the budget? All I want to know is, what are the administration's plans for the $17.7 million, if it comes to fruition? That's all I want to know.
And I would guess, I would agree with Mr. Lefever. And I would guess I would agree with Mr. Lefever. If we're not at the point, we know we're going to get that money, hopefully we're going to receive that money. So I think that that's a conversation that has to come later on. It's not a conversation that we can have now or directing the administration. We need to get through this budget, put the budget out forward, and then that could be one of our topics of discussion as to what kind of needs does the district have, what are the students' needs, you know, things of that nature. Because yeah, it is an important discussion in regards to $17 million. But I don't think tying it into the motion to bring the budget forward so the community can review it is appropriate at this time. But yes, that discussion must be had, but at a different time.
Proclama, it's already part of the budget, it's already part of the budget discussion. It's on slide 17, I'm sorry, slide 24. Fund balances projected in the future include the $17.7 million.
But it's projected. It's projected, it's projected right now. It definitely going to happen.
All right, hang on for a second. The question that the board is about to face is an appeal on the ruling of the Chair. That is the question. All right? A vote in the affirmative this time would be that you agree with the ruling of the Chair, which is, I don't want to include Mr. Kramer's motion, that I have the complete motion of, which no one has seen, and I don't think was articulated very well. So I don't really think you know what it is, but I'm happy to take that motion...
Would you explain that, what do you mean by not articulated very well?
Mr. Kramer, please.
You made an accusation. It's an opinion. You're out of order.
I appreciate that, so, all right. The question before the board is, you either approve and affirm the ruling of the Chair, that we will not amend the motion that is before the board with this additional motion that we have, and the affirmative would be, you agree with the ruling of the Chair, and we will take action on the original motion. A vote in the negative or a no would mean that you reject the ruling of the Chair, and you want to incorporate the additional language of this additional motion into the motion which was originally before the board. Do you understand that question? You are voting on an appeal of the decision of the Chair. Is everyone clear on the question? If you please, Sally, follow the roll.
Did we have a second to be sure?
I don't think we need a second on that question, but thank you.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Okay, the board is now back to facing the original question. Do we have any further discussion on the original question, or would you like me to repeat the original question? It is the original motion.
I would like to make just one clarification. On slide 15 that we just looked at, it says very clearly about the sale of 62-acre property, the net proceeds of approximately $17.7 million are planned to be received during fiscal year '21, and planned consideration for the use of those proceeds will be recommended for discussion at future meetings with the Board of Education. So yes, it's part of the projection, because not including that would be absurd. At the same time, it says in the same presentation that we are going to get future opportunities to discuss what to do with that money closer to the time when we actually get the money. Which is why I feel like we need to clarify that, and why I'm comfortable with that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I'd like to add a comment before I place my vote, I didn't realize our discussion was coming to an end.
That would not be in order, but we can erase all those votes like they never occurred, and we are back to discussion. Mr. Dombrowski, if you please.
Thank you. This has been an odd night with presentations in the middle of motions, but that's all right. I appreciate the work that the administration has done to develop this budget. Thank you that the information was presented clearly. But I think it's also important to acknowledge the current climate of a pandemic. There is no actions within this proposed budget to reflect the fact or to provide an ounce of relief to the community. The expenses are held high with no effort or indication of any belt tightening. Revenue projections are justified falling short due to delayed collections by the county in an effort to provide relief to our community through our property taxes. A budget reflects the priorities, investments, and goals of the community. This board represents the community and is presenting a budget that ignores the pandemic and impacts to the community outside of this bubble that we're within. The fact that D-211 reserves can absorb an $8 million deficit should not be used as a rationale to avoid cutting costs, scaling back an aggressive capital outlay, or adjusting expenditures to align with the conservative estimates of revenue. For these reasons, I cannot support this budget as presented.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
To clarify, am I...
Starting from the very beginning, like that we never took any vote at all the first time.
Okay, and I can use the same orders?
Same order, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Okay, now, Mr. Kramer, if you would like, your second motion can stand on its own if you would like to make that.
I would appreciate, I appreciate.
Yeah, the board will hear this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I move that the Board of Education direct the administration to provide a plan, including abatement, with respect to the anticipated $17.7 million proceeds from the sale of the 62 acres of land to be presented at the October Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and to be voted on at the October Board of Education meeting.
Did everyone hear that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat that. Mr. Kramer moves that the Board of Education direct the administration to provide a plan, including abatement with respect to the anticipated proceeds, to the anticipated $17.7 million proceeds from the sale of the 62 acres of land to be presented at the October Budget and Finance Committee, and to be voted on at the October Board of Education meeting. Does someone want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
May I request an amendment?
Discussion, okay.
May I request an amendment by Mr. Kramer for his proposed motion? And that is that it is presented for discussion at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and then again at the full board meeting, because not all board members attend the Finance and Budget meeting, to be able to also discuss it before it's voted upon, and then perhaps as a result of it being discussed at the October meeting, then either to be voted upon or be voted upon at the following meeting in November. Would you be open to moving the vote after discussion in October to a November vote?
Can I explain my rationale there, Mr. Rosenbloom?
Sure.
We roll, we roll from the budget to the levy. Okay, and we're going to have some pretty intense discussions on the levy in November. So I think that part of that discussion has to be an understanding of what we're doing with the $17.7 million. I just, it's too late to do it in September, so I think October is...
And that's fair, and putting it up for a vote in October would have discussion included in that anyway, so I'm fine with that. Sorry.
My, so what happens if, for whatever reason, the closing is expected in September? What happens if that's moved out for another month, and it doesn't happen until October?
Well, then the presentation is, I don't, we don't have the money yet, I can't...
Right, but there's nothing in the motion.
Yeah, it would have to, it would have to be delayed, and unfortunately, it would coincide with the levy discussions, which are going to be intense.
Is that something that needs to be included in the motion? Or, forgive my understanding, or does adopting this motion mean that we cannot delay it, regardless of if the closing is delayed itself?
Well, the motion directs Dr. Small to prepare something presented at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And presumably, you know, the idea of voting on it, unless Dr. Small brings a recommendation, it would be the responsibility of a board member to make a motion to vote on something, unless it's the superintendent's proposed recommendation, so...
I need clarification on what this discussion is, in insurance that it does not change our budget. We are in a timeline on the proposed budget as what has to be presented for the review of the public and when we have to approve it. Right now, I'm hearing a plan including abatement, and I don't know if that plan is an adjustment to this budget, because that is a completely different discussion.
Well, I don't believe that the board, the board took action to post the tentative budget for public viewing with the expectation that a final vote would be on the tentative budget we presented. We wouldn't reschedule the viewing for that. So I think what Mr. Kramer's intention is, he's, the proceeds will...
Hang on a second, before you do that.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
We read exactly what the language is.
Right.
So that was the language, Dr. Small's asking for clarification. Mr. Kramer is here to clarify for Dr. Small. Those were the questions she needed to clarify.
Okay, I can, I'd be happy to take out the vote on the October Board of Education meeting, but not the rest of it. I would like a recommendation from the administration by the October Board meeting, preceded by a presentation at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, which is a weak...
And I'd like to call for a point of clarification, I don't believe we need a motion to ask Dr. Small to put together a presentation and provide us with some information, if I'm not mistaken. That can just be asked.
I don't dispute that, that's just not what came to the board tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to put a deadline on something.
But I don't think there needs to be a motion, I think you can just ask for it, and she can make a note of it and take it as a request. Yeah, we can, versus voting on it and all.
So just to clarify, the way I understand the sequence, with the motion had specific language to include an abatement, correct? The terminology of abatement was within the motion. And the intention of the proceeds being utilized as an abatement with a function relative to the levy, which would be for future budgets, is I believe what Mr. Kramer's intention is. The levy that we're going to be looking at will be used to pay for a future budget, is that correct?
Yes.
So the sequence and order and language seems consistent and logical from my perspective, unless I'm misunderstanding something.
No, I'm, I understand what, where I believe that you're trying to get to, but we need to make sure everybody understands that sequence, so...
I don't exactly understand where you're going. I don't think there is need for a rush to come up with a plan. We're starting a brand-new school year, a lot of variables are in play, a lot of things are happening. And to add more on to the superintendent and the administration's plate to come up with a plan, I think that that has to be thought out, and not something that's going to happen within the next, what, six, seven weeks. I'd really like to give this some thought. I really want to find out what are the needs of each of the schools. I feel very strongly about this $17 million needs to be used for the students, because that was the intent of purchasing that land, it was going to be for the education of the students. And I know we had, prior to your being on the board, we did have conversations in regards to what that could have looked like. So maybe we need to really slow down and take a look and see, what are the needs? What do we need to do, maybe at each of the schools? Get the input from the parent advisory group, get the input from some of the students. That's one of the things that's very, very important to me. We need some input from the kids also. What do we really want to do with that? And there might be some really good ideas, and I'm very fearful of what you're asking for and wanting to get something thrown together. That's not right.
I strongly disagree with you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. The reality is, is that the $17 million, one way or another, is going to affect the levy. And we have to pass a levy by December. The clock is ticking, and we cannot wait until December or January to decide what the $17.7 million is. That money belongs to the taxpayers. And giving the taxpayers that money back directly benefits their children, who are the students.
Lauren, can you typically describe the pattern of abatement?
Yes, I, so an abatement would be tied directly to a levy. We are beyond any allowable action that can be done tied to the 2019 levy, that period has expired. So the 2020 levy would be the one that you're describing, that would be approved by December. And the abatement can be one of two ways. It would be either a reduction to the initial levy, or it can be done after the levy is approved as a reduction so that the district ensures that its new property growth is captured as well.
And the deadline for that is?
It's in March. The other point that I, if I can just, from a timeline perspective, the amendment that we have on the contract for NITI development, the approval has to be granted by September 22nd. The closing date is, I know that they are very interested in closing as soon as possible, but the closing date that's in the contract is October 15th, 2020, which would be after, if I, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I believe that the first October, or the first Thursday in October, which would fall in sequence with our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, is October 1st.
I just feel like we're rushing, I feel like we're doing two things. I feel like we're blending in a discussion that, you know, as presented, we can have at a later date. I also feel like we're doing that because we're rushing this part of the process, and I don't see any compelling reason why we have to do that. I don't, that's, you know, I, that's just how I feel about this. I'm open to a discussion certainly about abatement, including all sorts of other things about this money. I just don't see any compelling reason why we have to do this, you know, now or by what feels a little arbitrary date in October in what is a incredibly volatile year. I mean, on top of all of this, that, you know, has been on the administration's shoulders about the pandemic, we've also got an equity commission that we're trying to organize. That's not a light lift, that's a heavy lift. And, you know, all of the other normal course of business, that it's a lot of work on its own. So I'm, I'm open to your discussion, and I just, I just don't, I don't see a compelling reason why we need to be rushing, and that's what it feels like.
May I speak, it's not a rush. We owe the taxpayers a decision as soon as we can on what we're doing with that $17.7 million of their money.
We don't have that money yet.
Okay, fine, we're going to have the money. And we can, we can plan for, we can make a plan contingent on having the money. If the money isn't there, fine.
We can make all kinds of plans, but none of those plans help the taxpayer.
You just want to kick the can down the road.
None of those plans help the taxpayer, the decision is what makes the help, helps the taxpayer or helps the kids. So sure, I agree with planning, planning's great, but the planning doesn't help anybody until the decision is made.
Helps the taxpayers.
I think people generally understand what the motion is about. Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make? Okay, so just to clarify, because I think there was a... Okay, so just to clarify, because I think there was a, a friendly amendment in there that said, drop the vote on the October Board of Education meeting. Do you want to leave that in, or you want that?
No, no, yeah, leave, leave.
Leave it in, so it's as.
No, no, go ahead. A friendly amendment, drop the, the requirement to have a vote in, in October.
So in effect, I will read what you gave me, and I'd have a period at the end of committee. Is that?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. So Mr. Kramer has accepted a friendly amendment to remove the language related to voted on at the October Board of Education meeting. And so therefore, the, the question before the board is now the following. I'm gonna read it to you. The motion is that the Board of Education direct the administration to provide a plan including abatement with respect to the anticipated 17.7 million dollars of proceeds from the sale of the 62 acres of land to be presented at the October Budget and Finance Committee.
Meeting.
Meeting, okay. Is everyone clear on the question? So a, a vote of aye would be directing the administration to provide a plan in accordance with these conditions, and a vote of no would be, we're not directing the administration to do that. Does everyone understand that? The only final question I have is, Dr. Small, are you clear on what that direction is?
Now that you've actually read it, I understand.
Okay. Everyone is clear about what we're about to vote on? Tell, if you please.
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Cavill?
Nay.
Mr. Young?
Nay.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
No.
Okay, that brings us to item B, a proposed new policy, accelerated programming.
Have we finished the tentative budget?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we, I think we did vote on that, yes, because then I moved on to, yeah, as a separate motion, yes, but thank you.
Number three, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Okay, so item B here is the proposed new policy. Thank you, Ms. Summell and Ms. Peterson. Proposed new policy, accelerated programming. This is just the first time for tonight, so just for our information, any questions here? Okay, next item is health dental insurance premium rates for 2021. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the established Blue Cross Blue Shield premium equivalent rates, contribution percentages, and wellness incentive structure for the applicable employee groups effective January 1, 2021 as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have substitute teacher salary. Suggested motion that effective with the 2020-2021 school year, the District 211 substitute teacher rate will be established at a rate of $125 per regular school day. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Uh, next, we have sale of surplus property. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the sale of used surplus Chromeur B100 Athletic Line Sprayers, Dynamic Cooking Systems DSSFSCI Convection Oven, Binks 3-Horsepower Air Compressor, Champion 10-Horsepower Air Compressor, and Daniel's Back Plow by way of sea, public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next, we have the Illinois Association of School Boards Equity Workshop Information.
Thank you. Sorry, hold on just one moment. I move that the Board of Education approve the registration and scheduling of the free three-hour IASB Board Workshop entitled Equity: An Educational Imperative for all Board members, starting at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday or Thursday evening in the month of September, whereas it does not directly conflict with other school district or school board meetings or programs. Such scheduling would be arranged by Board Administrative Support.
Second.
Discussion.
So the goal of the attending this workshop is, again, like, one of the audience members that had addressed us during public comment was to check a box. What, what, what are we doing here that we're not going to be doing with our community through our engagement sessions?
Well, if self-development is considered checking a box, then I have a question regarding your thoughts around self-development as a board. The IASB workshop, and I'm gonna read something that we were all sent, titled Equity and Educational Imperative, is a three-hour workshop aimed at understanding why educational equity is needed, what educational equity is, and how to make it a reality in our district. During the interactive workshop, participants, and it is specifically targeted at school boards, will receive greater confidence and skill participating in valuing and working across racial and cultural differences. And we will have mutual support to identify unconscious exclusive behaviors which may be exhibited at times. Participants will focus on how to contribute to the school district's mission and strate, strategic focus on student preparedness and excellence for all students. Participants will deepen their understanding of the important and central role boards play in creating an equitable school environment that leads to greater student success. The workshop was first previewed at the Triple I Conference last November, is facilitated by IASB Field Service Directors, and there is no cost to our district. The equity plan that's been presented and to involve the community is not an educational opportunity for this board, whereas my proposal and this workshop would be.
Question, is this workshop, would that have to be part of a special board meeting? A regular board meeting? Ad hoc? I don't, you know, the, the, the rule of two. If, if we're all together in a room, is that a conflict without appearing a board meeting?
So for, for ISB and educational workshops such as this sponsored and provided by ISB, the rule of two does not apply. And it does not have to be considered a board meeting. It's considered a board workshop.
So you don't have to go if you don't want to, right?
Sorry?
You don't have to attend if you don't want to, correct?
Sure, you don't.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Okay, that will bring us to potential topics for future discussion.
I do, I do have a topic, and I may have asked this last month. I, I honestly don't remember, and I apologize. I know we had our speakers that threw out some numbers in regards to student discipline and everything. Would we be able to have a presentation maybe somewhere down the road when administration is able to, to talk a little bit more about the, the discipline report and share correct information and how some of those numbers are interpreted?
The work around the discipline numbers is a part of one of our equity subcommittees, so we could certainly do it in advance of the discussion at that equity subcommittee, or we could do it as part of that equity subcommittee when it comes back to the board.
Maybe in, I don't know, maybe in advance. I, I guess I would like some information, and I think it's important because numbers and percentages were, were thrown out, and I think we, the community probably needs to hear what reality is and how those numbers are interpreted and what's really going on.
Is that the committee that Mrs. Klimkowitz is on? Or will be on?
Yes.
Maybe after, maybe after you hear it, you, you can decide.
And that's fine.
In what format, if any, it comes to the whole board, then? Does that?
That sounds fine. And that's, that's good with me.
Dr. Small, okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, sure. All right, that brings us to committee reports. First, we have NSCO, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Okay, and I, I will be extremely brief. We had our meeting. Again, we did it as a Zoom meeting. Our next one will be in person, hopefully. We did recognize our shining stars. That was the summer food services program and the personnel that helped prepare that. And I had given each one of you the 2020-2021 Continuous Improvement Plan. It explains the mission. It explains the main goals and how they're using the, the dashboard to, to, to show how they're improving on, on the goals. So this is something that, that they're working on. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at another time then. So, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Edred and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
There's nothing to report right now.
Very good. Budget and Finance Committee, we, our last meeting, we had a presentation substantially similar to the, to the presentation that we just had a few minutes ago tonight. The, the minutes in that presentation from that meeting are still online and available on Board Docs if anyone wants to, to look at that. Let's see, that will bring us to our Facilities Committee. Mr. Young, or Mr. Dombrowski, or both?
Okay. I'll start with Conan High School. The football field and the track are completed. We have one tiller that's installed and should be operational this week. The other tiller will be then removed, and a new tiller will be installed there. Pelotan High School, the culinary kitchen is nearly completed. The only thing they're waiting for are the residential exhaust fans, which will be installed over the, the stoves that they have there. Otherwise, everything else looks good. And then we have Fremont High School. The locker rooms, there's been a problem there. They suffered kind of a setback because of wall tiles that they were, that they had ordered was delayed due to, due to the virus. And then when they did get delivered, they didn't meet our standards. So now the staff is debating whether to continue with that new set of tiles or, or go to ceramic tiles. That'll probably take another, I would say, at least another month before it's completed. That's it. Can you view everything, Peter?
No, I have no idea how you got that information. We, we haven't had a formal Facilities Committee
meeting. Okay. All right, that will bring us to announcements. And then finally, closed session. If there is no opposition to that, we can go right to the motion coming out of closed session. Okay. Next, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Cynthia Ershin effective May 2020, according to the master contract of the teachers' union. Can someone please move that?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
All right, if there is nothing further?
Just one more question before we adjourn. With regard to having public comment via Zoom, is that something that we could entertain? I know that I attended via Zoom the Schaumburg Zoning Committee, and they would allow public comment and, and recognize. And I'm not sure if it's something that we could provide to people that would sign up in advance if, for whatever reason, they are compromised or would be susceptible.
We would only offer it to those people, or we would offer it to everyone?
I think.
I mean.
How would we order them, like, in the, in the timing of people that are here and people that email in? Like, how would you put that in order?
Well, it, it depends on the limit. If you wanted to do a first come, first serve alternating, I, I, again, it's, it's at the prerogative of the Board President to handle that decorum. But, you know, as far as balancing that, I mean, there was a time where we're reading all emails. If we received emails that should be read and into the record, I would, I would imagine that we would in some capacity do that. That was at the zoning meeting. They would receive an email that would be read into the record. Um, you know, there's probably a dozen ways to skin that cat. I'm just suggesting.
Mr. Dombrowski, question. I didn't attend that meeting.
Sure.
Were people able to ask questions verbally?
Yes.
In that meeting from the community?
Not on the 62 acres, because they closed the public hearing on that the week before. But for the three other items on the agenda, there were public comments and questions that were both interactive as far as that went. I, I don't believe we would change our policy and, and answer questions in a public forum, but we could allow for comments, two, three minutes with a cap at, at your discretion, of course.
The most important thing to me is that the board ultimately hears the people that, that have something to say, and then the board can conduct its business. So ultimately, you know, roughly an hour's worth of time. Do you want to get some guidance from our attorneys on how we would order that? I mean, if people physically come, I, I would be more inclined to let all the people that physically came speak, and if there's time left over, than people that email in, because people could just email in all kinds of things and all kinds of emails.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know a, a good way to deal with that. Can we, can we get some guidance, and then?
Yes.
Then we can consider that. I'm, I'm happy.
We, we're allowing, we're allowing students, parents, teachers to opt out of coming into the building for the same concern.
Sure.
It, it seems appropriate to, to extend that same courtesy to the community regarding our board meetings.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I just don't want to open up a can of worms of having to address questions of how we did anything, because I'm, I'm indifferent to that. I'm happy to get all the feedback possible. So, okay. So we'll hear something about that at the next board meeting.
Sorry, I should have brought up during new business.
It's okay. It's, it's fine. Anything else tonight?
Yes. I'd like to compliment Dr. Small on her presentation with our new administrators. I think it was, it was very well done. I like the concept of during these difficult times, we have to make sure we're reaching out, and if we see people struggling, we have to reach out and grab them and help support them. It has to be a two-way street. So I commend you on the leadership workshop. And it was, it was a wonderful, I was at the, well, we were at the 731, and a, a good number of people in attendance. And I think it was, it was just very well received, and I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the, the support and connection with, with the administrators and, and them supporting their teachers and vice versa. Thank you.
I also want to comment. I heard from a couple of teachers that they liked the format that's going on right now with the remote farming. They feel a lot more comfortable this, at least today, compared to what was going on during the spring. And they feel that as it goes on, they're gonna get stronger and better. They feel a lot, just a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, I observed that firsthand in, in all schools. The, the dedication and, and the perseverance of the planning that, that, that 211 did to, to get this done. The teachers are motivated. They're fired up. It's, it's a phenomenal job.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.